Good evening and welcome to the third and final fiscal year 24 budget hearing hosted by the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Mary Skipper. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I will ask all of my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a remote meeting. I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you Chair. Dr. Allkins?
President.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Lopara? Mr. Meta? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage on YouTube and on YouTube. Recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's hearing documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschool.org/schoolcommittee, under the March 15th meeting link. Documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Signed up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Since Superintendent Skipper first presented her preliminary fiscal year 24 budget proposal on February 1st, the committee has held two budget hearings, one taking a deep dive into school budgets and another hearing taking a closer look at the central budget. A little later at tonight's school committee meeting, the superintendent will present the final fiscal year budget proposal to the committee for consideration prior to our vote on March 22nd. In a moment, we will invite Chief of Staff Nate Cooter to share a budget update, including responses to the many questions committee members have raised at prior meetings. First, I would like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Thank you Chair Robinson. Good evening, everyone. You know, this is our final budget hearing before our vote next week. I'll share a bit more later on in the evening before our updated presentation. But before I turn it over to Chief Cooter, I just want to say that this has been a very comprehensive process. We have appreciated all of the feedback that we have received from school committee in the form of questions, comments, concerns, suggestions, and similarly with the public hearings, being able to get that level of feedback from the public as they are seeing it through their public comments, you know, comments and testimony. This is what actually makes the budget process, in addition to the feedback we get from our school leaders and school communities throughout the process, so comprehensive and at the end creates a budget that we present to you for vote that I believe will be comprehensive of all of those questions, comments, concerns, suggestions. So I just want to take a moment to thank the committee and the public at large for their involvement and their time. You know, this really does just represent the beginning of our work together. As you will see, this budget is the first of several that will build toward our work in key areas of the organization. And I want to commend Chief Cooter and his staff for the work that they have done in preparation of this, including David Bloom, really to be responsive to the field and to the questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Cooter to be able to begin reviewing and walking through the committee's outstanding questions. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Superintendent and good evening, school committee members. Later this evening, as we mentioned, I'll present to you the superintendent's final recommended FY24 budget Over the last six weeks, we've heard from members of the community, had many deep discussions with this committee, guided by your thoughtful and insightful questions. We have also had the opportunity to finalize many school-based budget decisions in partnership with our school leaders. During the budget hearings, we did our best to answer all of your questions accurately and clearly. But inevitably, there are questions that we were unable to answer during the meeting in which it was asked. So we're committed to providing you with all the necessary information to make an informed decision about the budget. To that end, on behalf of the leadership team and superintendent, I shared a memo with this committee, which the public can find posted online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. This memo answers what we believe were the remaining unanswered questions from this body. I won't read the full memo here. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear more, to provide more opportunity to hear from the public and their input. But I do want to highlight one of the responses on a topic that has been a big part of the feedback we've received, specifically multilingual learners and the desire to expand multilingual and bilingual education has been a clear area of interest. For FY24, the district will create a bilingual programs department as part of the Office of Multicultural and Multilingual Education. We will hire a new native language assessment coordinator, a recruitment and pipeline manager for bilingual teachers, a hiring specialist specifically for OM and the Office of Student Support, and we're investing $1 million moving bilingual family specialists off of ESSER funding to secure those for long-term sustainability. We're also offering planning grants to schools who are interested in starting dual-language programs, investing $500,000 to ensure supplemental funding equity in our dual-language schools. On top of that, we're investing in 10 bilingual paraprofessionals, five heritage language teachers in high schools and providing rules-based reading training for 10 bilingual teachers, including a summer bilingual program as part of our summer offering for multilingual learners as well. So there's a lot of investments that we're going to highlight later, but I think it's important for us to continue to talk about the important investments that are informed by feedback we've received, particularly around multilingual learners and bilingual education. With that, I want to thank you again, as the superintendent did, for your thoughtful questions and to the community for their feedback. Public testimony is an important part of this budget process and has shifted the way we fund our district and has also shaped the way in which we approach new initiatives or deploy resources. So thank you for everyone who's taken the time to participate and for those of you who will continue to testify this evening. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Robinson for your questions and for public comment.
Thank you for the update. And because this is a budget hearing, I want to pause here for public comment. Committee members will have the opportunity to share questions and comments following the formal budget presentation a little later after we transition into tonight's meeting. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 10 speakers for this budget hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment that will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with our students. Brizney Salado, Destiny Williams, Zilla DeJesus. They'll be followed by Mary Tamer, John Mudd, and Robert Jenkins. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Brizney? Okay, Brizney is not signed into the meeting. Let's try Destiny. Destiny Williams?
Good evening. Hi.
Good evening.
Hi. Do you guys need me to start my testimony now?
Yes, please turn on your camera.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Did the time start yet?
No.
Okay. Good evening Board, BPS Board. I'm Destiny Williams and I go to Dearborn St. Academy. I'm in ninth grade and I'm a youth leader associate da Latina. I'm here to advocate for decreasing the funding for metal detectors in BPS Boston Public Schools. Also to address our concern with the proposal to increase funding for more BPD, Boston Police, President, Boston Public Schools. I would like to share some other solutions to address safety, student safety in our schools. I completely disagree with adding more metal detectors in schools and increasing BPD in our Boston Public Schools. From having experience with metal detectors in my school, Dearborn St. Academy, it would make me feel very unsafe to have to come to school and get any surgery when coming into school and having to worry about if the metal detectors beep because of my Apple Watch or my necklace. Eventually, it gets tiring to have to think about walking into school and not happening. It has been statistically proven that minorities are constantly being targeted by police. So having more police in our schools can cause many issues for people like me. Overall, I believe Boston Public Schools should rethink their decision with adding more police and more metal detectors. I hope you consider the issue that this would cause, how many people it could possibly hurt, and most of all, how it will affect your students. Instead, I recommend you increase the budget to repair the school bathrooms or other facilities. The majority of Boston Public School bathrooms I have seen, the mirrors are scratched up, the walls need to be repainted, the roof has leaks, and pieces of the ceiling are falling. Instead of policing the bathrooms and guarding them, maybe work on getting them fixed and cleaned correctly. Another thing you can use the funding for instead is finding ways to resolve bullying. You can hire more counselors or mental health staff to talk to the students and see how they are feeling. I feel there are more pending issues in the Boston Public School system than the issue of adding more metal detectors. Lastly, we need you to include us, your students, in the decision you make about our safety. We ask that you form a youth safety advisory group made up of the students and our families. Associate da Latina and several other organizations have reached out about this concern in the last couple of months. We're expecting to hear something back and your thoughts on this matter. Thank you for our time.
Thank you. Phil is not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Mary Tamer.
Good evening. I'm Mary Tamer and I'm the Executive Director of Democrats for Education Reform, Massachusetts. I'm here today to talk about the decline in enrollment at Boston Public Schools and the long overdue need to right-size and modernize the district. It's no secret the pandemic has supercharged a decline in enrollment in public schools across the country and BPS is no exception. But while COVID accelerated the decline, BPS enrollment has been on a downward spiral for two decades. A recent analysis from the Boston Schools Fund found enrollment declined for the eighth straight year last year and it's down more than 15% since 2014, a loss of more than 8,000 students, most of them black. More than 60% of BPS schools had a decrease in enrollment over the past five years. Yet BPS continues to operate 125 school buildings with a capacity to serve 55,200 students, 6,900 more than are currently enrolled. Demographic trends show that Boston will need fewer schools as time goes on, not more. Underutilized buildings cost the same to run as fully enrolled schools, but BPS is operating and transporting students to, at a minimum, 16 more school buildings than it needs. Because funding is based on enrollment, under-enrolled schools have less money to pay bills and ensure that students have the school-wide resources, academic and mental health supports, and staffing they need. For years, BPS filled the financial gaps caused by enrollment declines with so-called soft landing funding. When I joined the Boston School Committee in 2010, then-Chief Financial Officer John McDonough told me BPS had to right-size the district because empty seats were costing in excess of $25 million per year. 12 years later, that figure has grown to more than $56 million annually. And over the last three years, BPS has spent a staggering $101 million in soft landings for empty seats. If this proposed budget passes, you will bring that total to $169 million, including $25 million in ESSER funds that were intended to help students recover from the pandemic, not to pay for empty seats. The uncomfortable truth is we will never be able to create or invest in a truly sustainable system until we right-size and modernize it. BPS should institute a community-centered, long-term capital plan that modernizes school buildings and creates higher-quality schools and programs that meet the needs of all students. BPS can't get there, however, with a piecemeal approach and a lack of courage to make difficult decisions, including school closures and mergers. District and city leaders need to ask important questions, including what is the educational experience we want every child to have? And how are we fulfilling our mission to meet the needs of each and every child by squandering $169 million on empty seats in four years? This body and the leaders of this city have avoided these tough decisions for long enough and as a result, too many Boston students do not get the education they deserve. Moving away from weighted student funding will only serve to conceal these issues and is not the answer. Addressing your under-enrollment is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd, followed by Robert Jenkins, Ruby Reyes, Suleika Soto, Maria Serpa, and Ayale Shakur. If you could please raise your hands virtually. John Mudd?
John, you're muted.
Did I make it now?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize. I should know about technological limitations and overcome them by now. I want to appreciate and express my thanks to the highlighting of the response at the beginning of the meeting to the needs of English learners. Obviously, I haven't had a chance to go through the details, but it's important to see that there is a response on the part of the district. I wanted also to thank some of the leading staff for sending us new enrollment numbers for English learners and for being willing to explain to some of us why they are proposing to add 38 ESL teachers. If I understand correctly, some of these ESL teachers would be working with new students assigned to single-language SEI classes where the existing teachers are not ESL-licensed. That is reassuring since adding students to single-language SEI classes expands access to native language. But we also discovered a new problem. Apparently, under the traditional BPS approach to inclusion, multilingual learners with disabilities who the IEP team considers ready for inclusion are being transferred from SEI language-specific classes into general education with ESL. That would reduce their access to native language, the opposite of our goals. I don't want us to get lost in the weeds of these kinds of details. There are larger truths that all of us need to keep in mind. Over the past five years, there's been a significant trend in shifting students from SEI language-specific classes into general education with ESL. That is the opposite of expanding access to native language. As I said, I appreciate some of the specific steps that were outlined earlier. But critically important, there is still no overall plan explaining how BPS will expand access to native language for multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities. These would include new program models of bilingual education, new bilingual staff development for teachers in Paris, and so forth. We just don't have that yet. Finally, there are better ways to adjust some of the current budget proposals and take action this year. Foremost, there could be a significant new investment in recruiting, hiring, and developing bilingual staff in Paris in the current budget.
Thirty seconds.
Isn't this exactly the kind of thing that ESSER funding should be used for? The proposed pipeline programs underway are tiny compared to the needs in the future. What about investing in professional development, the professional staff, of literacy coaches, of principals, and other leaders, and so forth? These are budget adjustments that could be made now. Please do something now to improve beyond even what you have initially proposed budgets for multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Jenkins.
Good afternoon, City Council members, I mean, our school committee members, Superintendent Skipper. I would like to understand, well, I'm glad that, you know, the budget, the upcoming budget, that you're spending less than last year's budget. But I would like the budget to definitely respect, I agree upon what everybody has said already, but one of the main things I would like to talk about is safety, making sure that is reflected in the budget. But also, most importantly, our athletics program. Our athletic programs lead to our youth for extracurricular activities and also after-school programming. We have a lot of, we have a lot of students who are not connected, primarily the middle-school-aged kids, you know, the sixth to eighth graders, you know, making sure that they're taken care of. And also too, in today's recent Grove article in regards to the Shaw. The Shaw is near and dear to my heart, just like Madison Park. I've volunteered there and they've been promised through previous superintendents that looking at a new building, a new school facility for Matter Pan would be excellent. And I'm glad Superintendent Skipper and her team have worked with, you know, the Shaw School. They are dedicated teachers who work very hard for the families and students in the small school setting. Having a brand-new building would just help elevate and expand the success that BPS is looking for and it would give Matter Pan a brand-new building that we have not had in a number of years. That is BPS. We have a lot of charter schools that have put up buildings. So that's all I'm going to take your time in doing today. Thank you very much. I look forward to looking at the budget in our detail.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Just a friendly reminder for our speakers to please turn on your cameras when it's your turn to testify. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Hello, my name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Budget presentations do not prioritize getting funds to classrooms. The Henderson students who recently protested highlighted the lack of engagement, inappropriate suspensions and exclusion, and an investment in cell phone holding devices rather than funding supplies and restorative justice practices. The BPS community is struggling and the answer to this problem is not additional punitive measures like investing in 18 Community Connections coordinators when the Restorative Justice Office has only two full-time staff or an additional $31 million in cameras when schools don't have reliable internet. When student school committee member Diego Metta brought this up, Nate Cooter was quick to say that funds for cameras were coming from capital budget. However, Cooter and Skipper failed to address the 18 new Community Connections Coordinator positions to divert from the core issue of funding and implementing a comprehensive restorative justice plan throughout the district, which requires more than the current only two full-time staff people. Superintendent Skipper appears to be committed to funding 18 Community Connections positions rather than increasing the Restorative Justice Office by 18. Again, there are only two full-time staff people in the Restorative Justice Office. Rather than listening to the community, BPS has reduced opportunities to engage with those impacted the most, which is why there are only, there have only been three community equity roundtables. In addition, Skipper's commitment to improving transportation has been to pretend things will get better. A contract with Lyft has not been completed and so ensuring students get to school on time and families won't have to incur the cost has not been prioritized. She claimed this would be done by Thanksgiving, a PRS finding, and many inequities later, still nothing. Superintendent Skipper remains committed to saying things than doing the complete opposite. As for the regard of disregard of Mr. Metta's comments and questions, it is intellectually disingenuous to deflect an answer. Leadership is not just about asking questions, it's about taking action. We have shiny new cameras installed in schools, but students are struggling to get to schools. Restorative justice is about changing a school culture where students are valued and their voices are leading their education. This will not happen through Community Connections coordinators, cameras, or performative central office staff. How will staff undo harm? Where is that in the budget? In terms of enrollment decline, the district needs to start building new facilities. Soft landing dollars have supported schools with disproportionately large numbers, a Black Latino, students with disabilities, and English learners, which the district has divested in historically. This divestment lowers enrollment, would then impact school budgets directly, creating budgets that are focused on equity. How will staff undo the harm? Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite Randolph, our Spanish interpreter, to support our next speaker, Suleika Soto.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hi. No estoy segura si estoy en la reunión adecuada. A lo mejor estaba se puede estar en la otra reunión, pero estoy aquí unida a las madres y los padres de Saint Stephen's y que quieren que aumenten el presupuesto para el año escolar.
I'm not sure if I am in the correct meeting. I do not know if I was supposed to be in the other meeting. I'm here with the parents of the school, Saint Stephen's, and we are looking to see if we could, if the budget could be increased for the Saint Stephen's School.
So, de nuevo, no estoy segura si mi testimonio está supuesto estar en este, en este, en esta reunión o en la próxima, pero voy a dar mi testimonio como quiera.
So I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be speaking in this meeting or in the next one, but I'm going to give my testimony on this one now.
Okay. Mi nombre es Suleika Soto. Soy graduada de la escuela pública de Boston y tengo dos hijas que asisten las escuelas públicas de Boston ahora.
Oh, my name is Suleika Soto. I'm a graduate of BPS and I have two daughters that are going to BPS. Oh, my name is Suleika Soto. I'm a graduate of BPS and I have two daughters that are going to BPS right now.
Cuando llegué por primera vez en los Estados Unidos con un padre soltero y cuatro hermanos mayores.
When I got here to the United States with a single fa, with a father that was a single parent and two older siblings.
Me asignaron a la escuela primaria Sumner, donde tuve el beneficio de aprender de una maestra afrolatina como yo de Panamá y pude estudiar en bilingüe, en los dos idiomas.
So, when I got here, I was lucky enough to be assigned to the Sumner School and I had an Afro-Latina teacher like me.
Y pude, pude beneficiarme de poder aprender en los dos idiomas. Pude mantener mi idioma nativo, que es el español. Soy de República Dominicana.
So, and I had the benefit of, I benefited of having, of learning of both languages, saving my native mother tongue, that is Spanish. I am from Dominican Republic.
Y pude, en mi primeros tres años escolares, obtener una, un, un, lo voy a decir en inglés porque eso es lo que pasa, right? Like, we have to be able to. I got a presidential award from Bill Clinton at the time. So, pude tener mi, mi, mi educación bilingüe y pude obtener un reconocimiento presidencial del, del presidente Clinton en, en, en ese tiempo y me estoy, verdad? Soy un poquito vieja.
So, I was able to get my bilingual education and I was able to get a presidential award by the then-president, President Clinton, so I am aging myself. I think that I'm getting a little old.
So, digo todo esto para decir que, en verdad, hay un beneficio de, de tener y aumentar el presupuesto para la lengua bilingüe. Sé que cambió después, que, verdad, después que me dieron mi educación, que sentí que podía tener, pero después cambió la ley y ahora queremos volver a lo mismo, a lo mismo beneficio que yo tuve como, como estudiante bilingüe.
So, I know that, I know what have been the benefits and I know that now we're speaking about having the same benefits and the same increase in the budget that I had and the same opportunities that I had of having my bilingual education. I could attest of the benefits of having bilingual education.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Um, am I done? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I would love for the budget to be increased and for us to be able to increase dual-language education. We need to be able to teach the parents about their rights and educate them about their rights to be able to have, because my children, like, the point that I wanted to get to, my children were not able to benefit from the same things that I did. Like, I say all this to say that I tried to assign my children in bilingual education. It didn't happen at the Hurley or the Hernandez. I would have loved for them, but that's not a placement that I got. So, speaking to parents about their rights and about the choices that they have is what I really want to say in this. Because, like, I say this ought to say that. I'm here able to speak out and I know all of you all know me very well because I was able to access bilingual education and that benefit should be expanded to all of the students in BPS. Not only as a benefit for English learners, but for folks to be able to access, students to be able to access another language, which we know English is not the primary language right now in America.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Our next speaker is Maria Serpa, followed by Ayela Shakor.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Buena tarde, buena tarde, this. School committee members and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Maria DeLuge, B. Serpa. I am a professor emerita of the Seoul Bilingual Special Education at Leslie University and a member of the BPS ELL Task Force. I would like to begin by saying that I fully support and appreciate Superintendent Skipper's commitment to providing a home language to students who are in the process of learning English. However, this initiative and policy needs an action plan and an investment. And it is urgent and must be addressed in this budget to enable students' access to success. I also fully support the testimony of my esteemed colleague from the ELL Task Force, Mr. John Mudd, on the urgency of expanding access to home language with a concrete action plan and the necessary investment to make it happen. My testimony will focus on two critical points among the many that I wish I could share with you at this moment. The first one has to do with my deep concern about the current achievement results based on the current policies that BPS has been implementing since Question Two passed. How are our multilingual learners learning English and achieving at grade level? Well, I just found out from the, based on the Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education, the results. And let me ask you this question. Would you send your child to a school where over ninety percent of the peers do not pass the MCAS? Would you? Well, this is the situation that we currently have. According to DESI, students, ELL students or multilingual students, in math, only eight percent meet expectations or exceed expectations. And in English Language Arts, it's only five percent. If you go to the tenth grade, the results are no greater. Only eight percent are meeting expectations. So, and when we look at ELA, it's less, it's six percent. What are our students from BPS going to do with this kind of experience in school? I truly believe we can do better.
Thirty seconds.
I believe these results are immortal because they are harming students' future possibilities to achieve at grade level. So, the time, and the other thing that I would like to mention is that among, and again, my perception in terms of what is happening with this budget, there is fiscal inequity before our own eyes in this city, in a district, that had prided itself on equity and access. Let's acknowledge this equity. Let's fix it by providing equitable funding for our English learners with and without disabilities, including dual-language programs and access to home language in ways that are creative and meaningful in helping them achieve at grade level. The time is now to fix these budget allocations already highlighted before and to invest in home language access in different ways to provide fiscal equity and access to success in reaching grade level for all students.
Excuse me, Dr. Serpa.
The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ayela Shakor.
Okay. Good evening, Boston School Committee and Superintendent Skipper. I'm sharing this statement as a former BPS schoolteacher, a Mattapan resident, and current co-chair of the Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Task Force. The task force has spent the past couple of months, actually, clarifying our focus on efforts to close gaps for historically marginalized students. We now have three primary focus areas. One is data and accountability. Two is increasing teacher diversity, retention, and support. And three will be to revise the 2016 policy and ensures implementation. Increasing teacher diversity, as you know, is a critical part of the 2016 OAG policy, the proven method for closing opportunity and achievement gaps. For the purposes of the 2025 budget, we would like to see the district's commitment to increasing teacher diversity evidenced by an increase in funding for this important area. Currently, funding has been moved from ESER dollars over to the district's main budget, which is a good first step to ensure long-term sustainability after ESER. However, the Office of Recruitment, Cultivation, and Diversity, known as RCD, is not adequately funded for the task. For decades, BPS has been in violation of the 1974 Garretti Order that requires at least twenty-five percent Black teachers in. The district has repeatedly fallen short of this goal. This does not even take into account the vast need for Latino teachers and linguistically diverse teachers who speak the languages of our students. At the same time, there are over six hundred unfilled positions in BPS this year alone, which is part of an even bigger nationwide teacher shortage. The district can and must do more. Level funding is not sufficient to meet this current crisis. BPS should amend the budget or to include the following. Number one, increase funding for teacher diversity and recruitment. This includes increased funding for existing pipeline programs with proven results, including T-Pier, the Boston Teacher Residency Program, as well as Boston's own Boston Teacher Fellowship, the ACTP program, and Boston College Pipeline Program. These programs are generating strong candidates, but they're underfunded and they need more funding in order to yield even greater results. Increase the marketing and outreach in communities of color. Too many people do not even know about the open positions or the, the number of alternative pathways to becoming a teacher. And strengthen your onboarding process for new teachers to increase their success. Second recommendation is to increase funding for teacher retention and support, including MTL Prep and Teacher Cadets. And lastly, to develop and implement a monitoring system and report card to be shared with the public at each school based on the number of open positions, the number of candidates of color who were hired. This system will create greater transparency for the broader community and greater accountability for hiring managers. Lastly, in a spirit of data and accountability, the task force is requesting information on the amount of funding in the budget and specifically earmarked for increasing teacher diversity and professional development. We also separately have questions about the nine equity specialists who are included in the budget. Where is the job description? Who are they reporting to? And how would their goals be in alignment with the OAG policy and the ELL? And lastly, the task force will be meeting twice this month. We will prepare additional recommendations for the district. We will present at later.
Thank you, Ms. Shakor. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for this budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendations for fiscal year '24. I want to remind everyone that all budget documents are available online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can email your comments to budget@bostonpublicschools.org as well as to the school committee. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this budget hearing and immediately convene our regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lupera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Rowneal?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you. We'll move right into, we'll move right into tonight's school committee meeting. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February fifteenth school committee meeting, February sixteenth budget hearing, and March first budget hearing as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lupera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. Rowneal?
Yeah.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening again to everyone or for those just joining us in school committee. I want to begin by, first of all, wishing everyone a happy Women's History Month. Throughout this month, you know, we're going to celebrate Pride of Ways, but it's the impact and the contributions of women locally and throughout the world. And we'll be holding events throughout this month and amplifying leaders and visionaries through our Equity Warrior Series. Yesterday, I announced the leadership team and organizational chart for the district. And I know that this is something that, you know, in school committee, we've been talking about and you've been waiting for. You know, I recently hit my five-month mark and although it is true that there is a lot of familiarity in coming back to the district, there's also been marked changes of what, what and how the district operates over the last seven years. So I wanted to make sure that I was listening to our central and school-based leaders and staff, certainly our families, community partners and members, students, to make sure that the structure that we use and ultimately adopt addresses and supports the concerns and the hopes, you know, that I heard. There were several things that I wanted to make sure we addressed in the org chart that I think we've struggled with in the past. And this is again after having listened to a lot of different feedback. I think the first was single point of failure. And this, this was often at the highest levels of the organization and it had to do with decision-making, where so many decisions were away with one person that when there was a delay, it delayed important decisions being made and executed across the district. And, and many of these things were also called out in the Council of Great City Schools reports and then in the DESI audit. The second was around distributed leadership. And in this, it was around really having a distributed leadership model that spoke to efficiency, but also capacity building in the district in key areas. And where this was particularly important was in areas where a key person left and that body of work stopped because there had not been capacity built underneath and with that person. The third was certainly around making the support of the regional network model and the schools. You know, the priority, which it always, which they are, you know, is, is, and to make sure that organizationally, our time and our resources would go directly to supporting, you know, those, those regional networks in schools because that is where our students and staff, working with our students, lie. And the last was around sustainability. And I think the pandemic certainly pushed this, this door wide open. But really having sustainable amounts of work with clear lines of communication and accountability in the key areas. And I think that in particular was called out in the reports as well, that the organizational chart reflected the discrete bodies of work. the discrete bodies of work, and then most importantly, it was at a volume um, that, uh, an individual, a leader, and the staff could handle. Um, and certainly that the organizational chart spoke to that clearly and showed that we could draw lines of accountability, um, to that leader and to the, the staff. I do think that the structure that we've laid out aims also to reduce a lot of the, um, central and systemic challenges that certainly have been identified in the Council of Great City Schools reports, um, certainly in our DESI reports, really by making sure that we have enough resources and that they're organized well. You know, we have 49,000 children, um, in BPS. We have 13,000 staff. Um, we have our own human capital. We have our own transportation system. We have our own facility system. And that, from a business perspective, would put us as one of the largest enterprises regionally. Um, we need to make sure that we have the resources and that they're organized to support enterprise work at that level. I think that our leadership team, um, that, you know, we will, uh, talk through tonight and that you'll meet. Um, they represent students we're serving. Um, 63% of our leadership team identifies as educators of color. Um, and of that, 54% is either black or Latinx. Uh, we've comprised of, um, individuals who are experienced, proven their dedication year after year, uh, many of whom who have come through BPS, as I did, um, in a variety of roles. Um, or more excitedly, who have actually returned to the BPS, um, because their commitment and draw here to our mission is so strong. Um, but I think what unifies the whole team is that we're committed to helping our district reach its full potential. Um, that, I think, is the glue and, and the bonding that we all share. Some of the leaders that, you know, you'll, you'll see and, um, meet tonight, they're leaders, uh, who are or were BPS parents themselves. Um, they're BPS alum, um, always proud of that. And most importantly, um, all of them individually can really talk about their pride and their commitment to serving this BPS community and Boston. I really also want to thank the mayor. Um, I think that Mayor Wu, um, has really laid out a clear vision and a leadership um, that speaks to supporting our youth. Um, her commitment and her investment to the district, uh, in so many ways. Budget, Green New Deal, the Youth Opportunity Agenda, um, you know, all have been instrumental in helping us to take concrete steps and work in partnership to achieve our goals. I think, um, the org chart speaks to, you know, equity as a through line of our work and certainly the heart of our mission. The diversity of the district's leadership team, you know, comprises many identities, many cultures, many spoken languages, representative of the district's demographics. Um, you know, we have, uh, specifically, you know, in, in the, among our deputies, um, and chiefs, Spanish, Mandarin, Cambodian, Creole, Portuguese, name a few. The organizational structure that, uh, I announced yesterday and, uh, we'll talk about tonight also aligns very strategically to our key priorities. Uh, and this, I think, is very important for cohesion in the district. Um, you know, as you, as you, you know, I've said before, but as a reminder, um, you know, the six priorities we've laid out, first and foremost, prioritizing and accelerating academic performance and providing equitable access to quality education, particularly for those historically underserved by our district, our Black and Brown students, our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners. It also speaks to our priority of social-emotional learning. And I think this one is incredibly important post-pandemic. As we've all seen, our young people really struggling, seen our families struggling, um, and so an emphasis to that. Certainly streamlining our operations and our student safety. And I think that also means, you know, as you will see in, you've seen in the budget, but also in the org chart, that this also means using technology and data and building enterprise systems, you know, that really can support the amount of students and staff that we have in BPS. Um, and, and, you know, really making sure that, um, you know, that we serve them well. Right from the start, you know, the prior, our priority of, um, authentic family and community engagement and advancement work, um, you know, with equity as our through line of our community. Um, our communications, improving and lifting both our external and our internal communications. And this is with our staff, staff to staff, central to schools, and certainly, um, our, our district to the families. And finally, accountability. And that really means accountability in our central office, accountability in our schools, and making sure that in the work we're doing, whether it's the budget or any of the, you know, uh, academic initiatives, um, and priorities that we've laid out, that there's clear, there will be clear metrics and goals that are affiliated with those so we can hold ourselves accountable to that work. There's three main areas of work, um, that are represented in the org chart, and they're each led by a deputy. And so I, I feel strongly, uh, that, uh, and our deputies are so proud of the work that they're responsible for and are doing. And I want to make sure you hear their voices as you did last week. Um, but perhaps, um, you know, just in a, a deeper way, um, as they explain their organization. So, um, our senior deputy, uh, Superintendent of Academics, uh, will certainly, um, speak to that. Dr. Linda Chen, our Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Family, and Community Advancement, um, which area of work is led by Dr. Anna Tavarez, and our Deputy Superintendent of Operations, which is led by Dr. Samuel DePina. So they will, um, be presenting in a more deep view, they're part of the organization for which they're responsible. Additionally, uh, couldn't do any of this work without our fantastic Chief of Staff, Rochelle Nusso will be supporting the organization, um, enhancing what I think is a change in the role of the Chief of Staff, um, from one that can often operate in silo from the rest of the organization um, to someone in Rochelle who really has, um, put her arms around the organization, making sure that our organizational structures work well and removing, most importantly, any barriers that exist for our deputies and our chiefs as they undertake the critical work in their areas moving forward. Um, and so I'll be excited to have Shell speak to that. Um, and then just, you know, kind of finally, last meeting, we, we heard from each of the deputies, um, about their scope of work. But I think, um, what we've attempted to do in the org chart, and again, you can't detail every department deeply. Um, some departments have things underneath uh, or multi, uh, multi-departments within a department, given the size of the organization. But I want them to dive a little deeper into the org chart to just be able to hit, um, on the highlights of their teams. Um, and Rochelle will do the same. So with that, I'm going to very proudly turn it over to Dr. Chen to talk specifically about the academic side of the house to start. Linda?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, uh, Chair and School Committee Members. At this time, I'd like to have the, the chiefs and the exec, uh, the school superintendents turn on their cameras so you can see them as well. Um, it is such a privilege to work alongside the superintendent, my colleagues, and our academics team. The academics division supports the district's priorities to ensure that every child has access to culturally and linguistically sustaining grade-level instruction every day in every classroom in every school across the, the city. We also ensure that our schools have the training, materials, and supports to amplify the assets of our students and also provide tiered academic supports in all learning environments. Our division has four different areas. Um, again, I'll, I'll ask folks to turn on their cameras. Our Chief of Schools and Accountability is led by no stranger to the BPS, Dr. Drew Eccleston. Dr. Eccleston's work is to ensure that every school has what it needs to educate our students um, and that the district has tools to assess and monitor student outcomes. As part of this division are our, our regional school superintendents, who are part of the superintendent's executive cabinet. In our elementary and K-8 regions, we have Dr. Tommy Welsh, Region 1, Mary Driscoll, Region 2, Natalie Diaz-Ack, Region 3, Dr. Christine Landry, Region 4, Dr. Elena Luna, Region 5, Afraen Toledoano, Region 6. And in our secondary schools regions, Dr. Tanya Freeman Wisdom, Region 7, Jean Roundtree, Region 8, and Dr. Lynda McIntyre, Region 9. I know some of them are still finishing up commit, uh, community meetings and principal interviews. So you may not see them all here tonight, but I assure you they are on duty in another venue. Next is our Chief of Teaching and Learning, who is Leslie Ryan Miller, who has recently come back to the BPS and is overseeing our work in curriculum instruction and professional learning, as well as libraries and early childhood. Leslie leads our work in the equitable literacy priority. The two remaining divisions within academics are specialized services, uh, uh, which is formerly special education and multilingual and multicultural education. Both of those, um, we are currently, um, hiring for. However, in the meantime, Lauren Viviani is serving in the role of Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, and I am serving in the role of leading the OME office. The superintendent previously shared that both of these positions have been elevated within the organization in order to play a critical role in monitoring and supporting our most vulnerable students. Specialized Services leads our work in the inclusive education priority and multilingual and multicultural education leads our work in the priority area of expanding native language programs. I want to thank everyone for their partnership in this. We've got a wonderful team. I'll now turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Sam DePina.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, School Committee Members, and the BPS public joining us this evening. I'd also like to just take a minute and have my operations, uh, team, please put on your cameras as well. Just give it a second. Thank you for that time. Um, so again, I'm honored and humbled to be serving this role and I'm excited to, to, to move, uh, some of this work forward going, um, um, into the future, uh, as we get into the next era of Boston Public Schools. The Operations Division is a team of collaborative, student-focused leaders across six divisions. Our job is to create a school district in which students and staff have a safe welcome in their training environment and the tools to succeed and thrive. We are also responsible for getting our students safely to school, ensuring they have delicious, healthy, nutritious meals, are provided with wraparound services to support their social and emotional needs, and maintain our buildings. You know, and we have to keep the lights on and pay the bills to make sure everything's good. So, uh, that's the kind of the work that, that we'll be doing. In our six divisions, um, I'd like to first, uh, reintroduce many of you to, to this person who many of you all know, another capacity. But she is now serving as our Chief of Capital Planning, and this is Dell Stanislas. She'll be, uh, leading up our work around the Green New Deal, uh, for the Boston Public Schools team. Next, many of you have, uh, have met Nate Cooter. Uh, he's our CFO. Uh, he, uh, is the one who ensures that we're spending our dollars wisely and maximizing our budgets, uh, to invest in our students. Next, we have Ray Catchings. Uh, Ray Catchings is our Chief of Human Capital, and she works with all of our schools and departments to hire a strong and diverse team. Next, we have Jillian Kelton. Um, Jillian Kelton serves as our Chief of Student Support. And she'll, uh, work to ensure that we're supporting our students outside of just their academic education, but also their social-emotional needs in the extracurricular activities. Next, we have, uh, Niva Colkey. Uh, she's our Chief of School, uh, Safety. Uh, she works with all of our safety specialists that are in our schools and will also be managing our newly formed Office of Emergency Management that you hear more about later this evening. Finally, we have, um, our Chief of Operations, Indy Alvarez. Um, she's our, uh, Chief Operations, and she works with our traditional operations divisions and works with our Transportation Department, our Technology and Food Nutritional Services, uh, as well as our Facilities Division, uh, Department. Um, again, our job is to make sure our district runs smoothly and efficiently so that our teachers and school staff can educate our students. I'll now turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Anna Tavarez. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DePina. Thank you, Dr. DePina. As Superintendent Skipper shared in her remarks, many of us, myself included, are proud BPS parents. And when I was a principal at our first dual-language school, I experienced firsthand the transformative power of access to learning in the language and culture of the community we served. Now, as I lead Equity, Family, and Community Advancement Divisions, I understand how critical it is that we elevate equity and engagement by strengthening partnerships between and among families, the communities we serve, the district, and most importantly, our schools. We value the importance of relationship building and collaboration. We also play a critical role in closing the opportunity gaps for our historically marginalized students by addressing bias and discrimination through anti-racist practices. We know families and communities must be welcomed, included, and encouraged as partners in their students' academic success. The divisions I lead alongside the chiefs and their teams support the entire organization by centering equity and engagement as through lines to all of our work. The divisions include, as you can see, Equity, Strategy, and Opportunity Gaps, led by Dr. Charles Grandson, Chief of Families, led by Chief Denise Snyder, and Community Engagement, led by Chief Mary Mortiz. Our goal and commitment is to practice genuine and equitable engagement practices. These are essential to increasing trust within our community while providing us the opportunity to also receive critical input and feedback, thereby creating a true partnership. This goal will take time and commitment. Thank you for the opportunity to share our work. I'll now turn it to my colleague, Chief of Staff Rochelle Nouse.
Thank you, Dr. Tavarez. Good evening, School Committee Members and the Boston Public Schools. Saludos a Rafa, como estas? My name is Rochelle Wosu. As some of you know, I, um, I am a proud BPS alum. I graduated from O'Briant. I, I am also a, was a proud BPS teacher and principal. Um, and I also went through the district, um, in a bilingual classroom. So I'm very grateful for my two languages. So I have the honor of serving as Chief of Staff for the superintendent. In my role, I work closely with the superintendent and the executive team in supporting them to deliver the district's strategic priorities that will ultimately transform the experience and lives of all of our students. I work to remove the unnecessary barriers so our work can move forward and really hold the leadership team accountable for all of our work. And we do this through regu- regularly monitoring the implementation of the district's priorities and projects. As you can see, I directly manage the work of the Systems Improvement Plan, which is known as the SIP. I work with the Senior Advisors, Government Relations Team, the Problem Resolutions Team, which is PRS, and our newly created Compliance and Risk Management Team. Most of these departments really work across the district and stem from areas of need or single points of failures that have been identified within our organization. So for the sake of our time this evening, I won't go through each area, but I will say that there is a lot of work as a district that we must do. And we now, and we know that having an organizational structure is really necessary to help us streamline all of the work and decision-making. But we also know that an organizational structure doesn't solve all of the problems. We must have a strong and united team and a central team that is here to support our schools so that our schools can support our students and families. Thank you, everyone, and I'll now turn it back to the superintendent.
Great. Thank you, Rochelle. Um, I think that there, we just were joined by a few of the school soups, um, who are finishing other meetings. Uh, but I can't tell from all of the people on the screen, um, who just came in. Um, so if I could just ask all of the school soups to turn their cameras on. And, uh, Dr. Eccleston, maybe you could just, um, uh, read the names again. And, uh, Dr. Eccleston, maybe you could just, um, uh, read the names again and what region they are, um, attached to.
I have the regional list memorized. Uh, so, uh, Region One, uh, Dr. Tommy Welsh, I know is here. A few of them were just, uh, focused on, uh, finishing principal interviews with school-based committees. So I want to thank, uh, Dr. Welsh for joining. And Region Two, Mary Driscoll. And Region Three, Natalie Diaz-Ack. And Region Four, Dr. Christine Landry. And Region Five, Dr. Elena Luna. And Region Six, Ephraim To- Toledoano. And Region Seven, um, Ted Lombardi, serving and supporting, uh, on behalf of Dr. Tanya Freeman Wisdom. Uh, Region Eight, Jean Roundtree. And Region Nine, Dr. Lynda McIntyre. Thank you all for being here and for your extraordinary work every day.
Great. Yeah, and you'd shout out, uh, the school soups really. They're really making our regional model work and improving, um, every day. So thank you all. Um, so just thank you to Rochelle, to the team. Um, I, I, you know, I really do believe in a, a, a distributed and a shared leadership model. That's been my entire career. Um, I don't believe, um, any one person can do all of it. And so I will rely heavily on this team. We are a team. And when we present, you'll see us together. Um, you know, we, we in every facet talk through decisions together. Uh, this is a team. Um, and you know, the division chiefs, they really are driving the work because they have, they, they are supporting the deputies and making sure that the areas of work respective to them. Um, that they are accountable and that they are making sure that that work is driven to meet our priority areas. Um, and that they have clear, uh, performance metrics, um, that they will be developing to know the job that they're doing. Um, and the staff that they work with. Um, it is really important to me that we work as a team and not as individuals so that we will learn the work together. It's one of the best parts of this is actually learning work together. Um, you know, supporting one another, uh, when one area needs support, we all support. Um, and really finding natural ways to connect our work. And I think this was pointed to in all of the reports, that this sense of teaming and this sense of connectivity. Is going to be critical to lifting the BPS to the next level. Um, I think it's also essential that, um, as, as chiefs and, and the executive leadership and deputies. Um, that we also work with each other to remove barriers, um, that prevents our work from connecting. Um, and most importantly, that we, we build this district, we build BPS, um, as the district that has all high-performing schools. Um, in which we stay very focused on eliminating the persistent opportunity and achievement gaps that have been historically part of our district. Um, I also recognize that when there's a change of leadership, uh, there often is an instinct, uh, to dismantle. Um, to rebuild, to rename, to take credit. Um, it's just, it's just human nature when folks come in. Um, and I want to be clear, we're not doing that. Um, we're building on the things that are working. We're acknowledging them. And we're, we're acknowledging them with pride. And some of those happened under Dr. Cassilia. Some of those happened, uh, under Dr. Chang. Some of those happened, you know, back to earliest superintendents. Um, we need to hold those things up with pride. But we're, we're also, um, we're also using all of the external and internal data reports. Um, Council of Great City Schools reports to identify the challenges that we have and embracing those recommendations. Because those are opportunities to strengthen the systems that need to be strengthened and build the systems and structures that are missing. So we can do both. We can celebrate what's working well and give credit. And we need to identify what's missing or not working. And then we need to work hard to, to accept recommendations, uh, embrace them and to, and to do that hard work. Um, to make sure that we correct that. Um, as a team, uh, you know, we feel deep accountability. And shared mission to this work, um, to BPS, to helping to make sure that this district is the stable, high-functioning district. That our students, our families and staff need and deserve, and that at various times in our careers, we were part of. Um, I'm really proud of the team and we want to build a structure in the BPS that is a district that can withstand change. Um, it is strong enough that it can withstand, withstand change of personnel, withstand change of, uh, you know, school committee, mayoral, superintendent. Because the systems and structures work so well that people hold on to them and the culture is strong enough. That people hold on to it in the time of change. Um, and so that is what we, as, as a team, this amazing diverse group of chiefs. School soups and deputies come before you tonight in this organizational chart. Um, and we're not done. We will continue to, uh, recruit and welcome back. Um, people who have been part of the mission of BPS in the past, uh, and who hold and share the mission that we have for us to, to make this district the one that, um, is going to do right by our families and our students. So with that, um, I'm going to turn from the organizational chart. Sure. Uh, we'll have some further questions later on, and I just want to share a few of the bright spots because there were, there were many of them, um, over the past week or two weeks. Um, so, uh, first of all, I want to shout out to some, some of our personnel. So, um, Antonelli Mejia, who's the principal of the Sarah Greenwood School. She was a featured speaker at South by Southwest in Austin, um, and she was speaking about equity and education. Um, so shout out to Antonelli. Uh, also shout out, we had, um, a lot of the competitions for city championships in athletics. Um, obviously athletics means so much to the kids in our community. Um, and so we celebrate tonight some of our city championships. Uh, coed swimming went to Latin Academy, boys indoor track and field to the O'Briant. Girls indoor track and field to Latin Academy. The boys' basketball to the Jeremiah Burke. The girls' basketball to Tech Boston Academy Bears. Uh, and they were recognized at City Hall by City Council O R L for winning their first ever city league championship. Uh, and title. So congrats, uh, to all of those teams because those athletes, not only do they compete hard. But they work hard all season to stay in shape and practice and then do their best on the court. So congratulations to all those that participated, but you know, to our, to those that, um, took the city championships, extra congrats. Um, another, um, another shout out, um. Delmas Mayo made history today by becoming the first wheelchair athlete to compete in the National Indoor Games. Um, he also improved on his personal best by two seconds in the mile and he completed it in, uh, four minutes and thirty seconds. So huge shout out to Delmas. Um, we also had the amazing opportunity, uh, two weeks ago. To highlight the work with Special Olympics Massachusetts. We celebrated, um, at Brighton High School, um, BPS's commitment to, uh, offer inclusive and equitable education and programming. In the area of athletics, um, and physical activity, uh, to students across the district. And we were able to watch Brighton High. It was a Brighton against Brighton game. Um, and they played an inclusive game and it was amazing to watch the students work together, really collaboratively. Um, very exciting. You could feel, um, the, uh, the auditorium gym was full. And you could feel, um, how excited and supportive the kids were of one another. So, um, you know, to Andrew Bott, the, uh, the school leader and to his staff and to the Special Olympics Massachusetts. Um, who gave us an additional grant to expand, um, inclusive athletics across the district. Um, our schools have also had some amazing distinguished guests. Uh, we had Governor Mara Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. They came to talk to students at the Hurley in honor of International Women's Day. We also had, um, in the award-winning actor Jared, um, Holton, who plays Lafayette and Thomas Jefferson on Broadway. In Boston's production of, uh, Hamilton. He stopped by Boston Arts Academy. Uh, he also i- is playing or has played, um, Shrek in Shrek the Musical. Um, and just coincidentally, but the students at B A A, um, are starring and producing their own version, um, over the weekend of Shrek the Musical. Um, and just a shout out to Vice Chair O'Neill for making that happen, making that connection happen. Um, students and staff were thrilled, um, to be able to meet Jared. Lastly, uh, congratulations to Bernadette Manning, who is at Boston Day and Evening Academy. She was selected by the Massachusetts Selection Committee for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Um, and she was, uh, selected as a Massachusetts-level finalist in the mathematics award category. Uh, side note, um, I had the, I had the pleasure of working, um, with, uh, with Bernadette at T B A. She was, uh, one of our math teachers there. So I saw her powerful impact on students, uh, her creativity and her teaching. Um, and her ability to transform how others thought about mathematics, students and staff. Um, she's been with our district for over twenty-five years. Um, this particular mathematics category included math, technology, computer science, and the science category. Um, also had science and engineering. So it, you know, this really is such a tremendous honor. Um, the Ma- Massachusetts-level finalists will be honored at the state ceremony, which will be happening, um, in the evening of May ninth. So big shout out to Bernadette, not only for this, but just for all of the tremendous impact she's had on our, our young students, uh, over the years and, uh, and staff. Uh, and so just again, thank you, uh, for your time. This concludes my report and happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, superintendents. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes, one to two questions. And I want to remind B P S staff to, um, also be brief in your responses. Are there questions? Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Gracias, Madam Chair. Quiero empezar felicitando a este equipo de liderazgo ejecutivo que hemos, alguno los conocía, otros no, en el día de hoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to begin by, um, congratulating this executive, this executive team. I had the opportunity of, of knowing some of you and some of you I have not.
Tengo mucha esperanza con algunas de las personas que he conocido.
Are there other questions, comments? Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I share the comments of my fellow members and congratulating the people that were talked about today. And Superintendent, I just want to kind of ask your thoughts on one issue, and I know you very much take a team approach. And so, you know, people shouldn't focus. One thing we have struggled with the past few years is superintendents get under a lot of pressure to have direct reports, and it tends to be too large a pool to operate effectively. And I think advice from committee members to superintendents in the past is have less direct reports, but also have them empowered so that the rest of the central office and also school leaders and others know that these folks understand what your goals are, are speaking for you, are empowered to make decisions, and have the responsibility to make decisions and the accountability if those decisions are not correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, there is always pressure. People perceive an org chart to be a definition of power, and there is always pressure in how it's perceived. In the past, it could often be, you know, where someone's office is as well, which is a little different now. So I'm just wondering how you balanced, you know, that, making sure, and I also want to applaud you not only for how you set it up, but also the focus on the regional approach and the regional superintendents. You know, Dr. Welsh has been extremely successful in East Boston and, you know, Charleston and the community that he works with in getting the school leaders working together, sharing best practices, et cetera. I'm delighted to see that. I know it had been done in the past, and then it was stopped. I'm delighted to see that model back because I'm a big believer as well, but that is a great way to build synergy amongst school leaders. Parents get to trust schools in a circle, et cetera. So I applaud you for doing that, but I'm wondering your approach and how you balanced, you know, having less, making sure they're empowered, responsible, and accountable.
Sure. So this is, I could spend a lot of time on this one. So I think there's a difference between supervision and evaluation, which is the reporting line versus the bottom line. And sometimes I think we confuse that if someone reports to somebody, that that automatically means the higher the person they report to, the more important or essential that that work's going to happen. And really, it comes down to the ability, like the bandwidth, to supervise and evaluate well on the day-to-day. But, and so I think the distributed leadership model allows better supervision and evaluation because it's fewer people. There's also the issue of the bottom line, right? And that is, that is what we're all accountable for, but that's what I'm accountable for to you and to the community. And so us making sure that we're building in, which hasn't, hasn't always happened, you know, really good metrics and KPIs that represent each body of work of what is being looked for and what is achieved. On a regular basis, you know, just because a chief doesn't report to me, and I don't supervise that chief, doesn't mean I'm not in constant dialogue about an issue. But the systems and the structures of the deputy meetings, the chief meetings, the exec, and where we make decisions and where we set practice and policy, that's done together as a team. I am a member of that team, as are the deputies, as are the chiefs, and as are the school suits. And that's how we're approaching this in a way to create the collective accountability that's been missing, but also to know that we're accountable to you and the public. And that's where, to me, the metrics, the KPIs come in. So we're trying to eliminate single point of failure, which often happens when one person is trying to oversee too many people or too much of a body of work. But at the same time, we're building in much more accountability for us, for the bottom line of improving the experience and the outcomes of our students every day. So that is what is sort of behind the structure.
Thank you, Superintendent. And do you think this structure is going to help break down silos within the bowling building of not my department, not my job?
I do. I think it starts with our chiefs. But remember, there's a lot of departments under a chief. And so the work that is, has to be done is finding mechanisms, as we'll develop together, to be able to make that work happen at other levels of the organization. All the work doesn't happen at the chief level or the deputy level or the school suit. In fact, a lot of the work happens at the other levels. And so one of the things we're unified on is to make sure that we're creating those vehicles, both when we're dealing with an adaptive, you know, problem like, you know, Dr. Alkins was saying, that we bring the right stakeholders at different levels of the organization together, and that's the chief's responsibility to identify that, make sure that that's happening, but that it's also then translating, right, on the other end to an actual action plan that gets implemented. And I will say, "action plan that gets implemented", because that is a big piece of what sometimes in a large organization doesn't happen. My team knows, I put them all on camera, they would say the same thing. It's the difference between 80% down the court and putting it in the hoop. So we are focused on putting things in the hoop. Great plans don't yield great results unless you finish them. So a lot of this is going to be around implementation, the accountability of that implementation, and the best way that we move forward with that is to make sure that all of our departments are working together in this work.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Carded Hernandez.
Hi, thank you. I have another question, and it's just about, I guess it's more specifically about your vision for early childhood education. I think sort of outside looking in, it feels like it's a really important pro-enrollment strategy for us. And then also, as a parent of a young child, it just feels like a really important piece of the puzzle for us to tackle as we talk about equity. And at the same time, in the current structure, it doesn't feel at the top. So as we're hearing from the mayor about a hope for a universal program or a more universal program for four-year-olds, and even the expansion to home-based care programs, I'm just sort of, how does this live at BPS? And sort of, how do you wrap your head around it?
Yeah. So, you know, currently, as you see, you know, Dr. Chen Wu is, has under her body of work, early childhood. I think what's unique is that we live in the ecosystem of the city, which is a mixed delivery. So it's not as if BPS can just do its thing. We have to make sure that we're doing it together with the city. What is amazing, you know, Kristin McSwain is back, and she's working on the early childhood pieces. She and Jason Sacks, Dr. Sacks, are working very closely and cohesively. They work also with enrollment and Denise Chief Snyder to make sure that the early childhood sphere, that we're all the way back to K zero, mapping out, looking at data, seeing needs. Special education is a big component of that, as will bilingual education be as we bring that in. And so as when early childhood as a committee meets, that's the difference. It isn't just Dr. Sacks making his plan over here and then giving it to Dr. Chen. It's actually happening where the city and Kristen are at the table, special education is at the table, OME is at the table, enrollment's at the table, because it is one of those areas that touches multiple departments. In terms of the vision piece for it, you know, one of the things that, you know, we firmly believe, right? I always have parents who are first teachers. And so working all the way back to birth is the goal. You know, really engaging our families as early as possible when they know they're going to have a child or they first do, to have that first introduction to the school, to the district, to the mixed delivery as a way to say, hey, here's all the resources that are available. It's just my network. Single point of entry is something that's being worked on on the city side for that. But we're very excited to kind of build that out and build that forward all the way into investing in the playgroups area, so we get parents connected with other parents. Many of our schools offer that now. And then obviously, as we start into the formal programming of three-year-old, the K zero, the K one. So we intend to build back and to make sure that it is the ecosystem of the city as well. Some of that is around PD and opening up our PD to make sure that in the mixed delivery system, providers have access. We're aligned, because the stronger the mixed delivery system is in delivering students to us in, say, K zero or K one, the better the outcome for the student, and there isn't that gap.
Yeah. It's interesting, and you know, we tackled some of this in my work in New York, but it is an interesting experience for families, because so many, we hope, won't experience it as two different systems. And so, you know, in this budget, which we'll get to later, but also even in this, I wonder if we can be more pointed about the ways that the systems intersect so that we're guaranteeing quality and that, that like the BPS system has a vested interest in that relationship with external providers as well. And...
Right, which we do. And I think the good news is even in our enrollment data for this year, we've seen a significant uptick showing that the mixed delivery is, you know, making sure we're connecting with BPS and students are enrolling. So we're already sort of seeing that piece. The quality piece of what you're talking about is obviously going to be in the data of readiness. And so that'll be something I know that Dr. Chen's going to look deeply at with Director Sacks.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Superintendent, I just have a quick question. Looking at the chart and still seeing that we have two significant hires to be made in special ed and OME, do we have any timeline around when we hope those hires will be made?
So thank you, Chair, through you. So yes, we do. In fact, we timed it with an external recruiter, so we would hit the right hiring season. I think this is one of those situations where, when it was vacated before, it sat lower in the org, and we were always trying to hire off-cycle, which is near impossible. So we're right now in the national, like, stink with the timeline. So they're, you know, they're recruiting actively their applicants over the course of the next four weeks. They'll start with screening, and then they'll start by, you know, giving us some candidates to take a look at. And so we'll form our screening committee and so forth. This would be, you know, the February through April, kind of like the main hiring season. So we're pleased that it's gone this way. We think we're going to get some great applicants for it. The other national certs that Director Catchings is, or Chief Catchings is interim right now. And so that process is also running for human capital. So there's actually three that we will be screening.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any other questions before we move on? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Carded Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lupera. Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. We have 20 speakers for this public comment period. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. We'll begin with our speakers who will be using Spanish interpretation. Please raise your hand virtually. Zoe Garcia, Maria Mejia, Susana Gonzalez, and Sugie Rondon will be our first speakers. Zoe Garcia. Please accept the prompt. I'll invite our Spanish interpreter to support this next set of speakers.
I'm here.
Randolph, could you please ask Zoe to accept the prompt?
Sugue, por favor, debe de aceptar la invitación que está saliendo en su pantalla para que la podamos escuchar.
Zoe Garcia.
Sugue Garcia, por favor.
Hola, mi nombre soy Isabella. Vivo en Rosendale. Tengo dos hermanos. Estoy en cuarto grado. Nací aquí en Boston. Tengo diez años. Precisamente, hoy es mi cumpleaños. Entonces, no sean tímidos y felicitanme. Fui alfabetizada
So, un momento, Zoe.
En la escuela bilingüe.
Zoe. Zoe. Debes de esperar que yo lo diga ahora en inglés, okay? Zoe, para que ellos entiendan. Así que tú hablas dos o tres palabras y después te paras y yo le digo, okay? So, ¿cuántos hermanos es que tiene Zoe?
Dos.
So, my name is Zoe Garcia, and I have two siblings. I am, and today is my birthday. So don't be shy and wish me happy birthday.
Fui alfabetizada.
Continúa.
Fui alfabetizada en la escuela bilingüe. Gracias a esto hablo, leo, y escribo español.
And I had a dual education. I have a dual education, and thanks to that, I can write, speak, and read Spanish as well as English.
Puedo hablar con mis abuelos, tíos, y toda mi familia aquí en República Dominicana, que no saben hablar inglés.
And I could speak with my grandparents, uncles, and rest of the family in Dominican Republic since they do not speak English.
Mi mamá dice que debo ser feliz de hablar dos idiomas y que esto es un valor agregado que tengo.
My mom always tells me that I should be happy that I speak two languages, and that is something that is of unadded value to me, speaking two languages.
Por eso, hoy en el día de mi cumpleaños, abodo, abogo por más escuelas como las que familias pueden...
So because of this, on my birthday, I'm advocating to have more schools like the Hurley.
Que las familias pueden mantener sus culturas e idiomas.
That the families can keep their cultures and their languages.
Y juntos disfrutamos esta hermosa nación.
And together, we can enjoy this beautiful country.
Dios le bendiga. Thank you so much. Everybody say happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Zoe. Our next speaker is Maria Mejia.
Eh, María Mejía, por favor.
Me escuchan ahora?
Si, le escuchamos.
Okay. Buenas noches, damas y caballeros, y autoridades correspondientes. Soy María... Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and present authorities here.
Soy María Mejía, y vivo en la comunidad de Rosperi, y mi hijo estudia en la escuela Blaston.
My name is María Mejía. I live in Roxbury, and my son studies at the Blackstone School.
Queremos que para el presupuesto del próximo año escolar se active la ley Look.
We would like that for the next budget, Look law is activated.
Y con ella la expansión de los programas bilingüe a todas las escuelas.
And with that, the expansion of bilingual programs to all schools.
Esta ley fue aprobada por el estado y le provee al distrito la flexibilidad de hacer, hacer exactamente eso.
That law was approved by the state, and it allows the district the flexibility to do this.
No solo brindar acceso a que estudiantes mantengan su idioma nativo.
Not only that students could keep their native language.
Pero también que aquellos que solo hablan inglés se beneficien de adquirir un segundo idioma.
But also that those who only speak English can acquire another language.
El saber te da conocimiento, y el conocimiento es poder.
Knowledge gives you power.
Por eso necesitamos transparencia en cómo se gasta el presupuesto.
That's why we need transparency and knowing how the budget is spent.
Para dar los apoyos necesarios a los estudiantes multilingües y multilingües con discapacidades.
To give the support that multilingual learners and multilingual with discapacities have, we could offer them that support that they need.
Como madre tengo una inquietud porque nunca me dieron a elegir la lista de las escuelas.
As a mother, I, they have never let me choose through a list of schools.
Nunca me explicaron los tipos de programa para aprendices de inglés que estaban disponibles.
They never explained to me the different programs that they, that were out there for English learners.
Ni me dijeron que tenía derecho a elegir un programa bilingüe.
And they never told me that I had the right to choose a bilingual program.
Donde mi hijo se puede beneficiarse y mantener su idioma nativo.
Where my son can benefit and he can maintain his native language.
Es importante seguir las recomendaciones del ILL Task Force y DILAC.
Thirty seconds.
It's important that we follow the rules of the English Task Force and DILAC.
De la cual formo parte de estos grupos.
And I am part of these organizations, of these groups.
No quiero que mi hijo pierda mi idioma nativo, que es el español.
I don't want my son to lose his native language, my native language, which is Spanish.
Ya que mi hijo se está alfabetizando en inglés.
Since my son is being, is being advertised in English.
Gracias, María Mejía.
Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susana Gonzalez, followed by Sugie Rondon and Alba Gonzalez. Susana?
Susana González... Susana González, por favor.
She has not signed into the meeting. So our next speaker will be Sugie Rondon.
Sugie Rondon.
She is also not signed.
Hola, buenas noches.
Welcome.
Oh, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
Buenas noches. Noches. Miembro del comité de las escuelas públicas de Boston. Mi nombre es Sugue Rondon.
Good evening, members of the Boston School Committee. My name is Sugue Rondon.
Vivo en Rosendale. Soy madre de tres niños registrados en BPS, y soy organizadora de padres de San Stevens.
Oh, I... Perdón, Sugue, ¿donde resides?
En Rosendale.
So I reside in Rosendale, and I am the parent of three BPS students.
Y soy organizadora de padres y familias de San Stevens.
And I am an organizer and a parent organizer in San Stevens.
En nuestras últimas reuniones con las familias de nuestra comunidad, hemos estado hablando el tema del lenguaje nativo y el presupuesto.
In the most recent meetings, we have been speaking about budget and native language.
Presupuesto para el año 2024.
For budget year 2024.
También hemos participado en las reuniones de la fuerza de trabajo, ILL Task Force, y DILAC.
And we have also participated in DILAC and ILL Task Force meetings.
Después de estudiar y analizar el presupuesto, hemos decidido tomar acción ante este importante tema.
After analyzing and studying the budget, we have decided to take action in this important matter.
Porque este toca muchas de nuestras familias cuyos primeros lenguajes no es el inglés.
Because this touches a lot of families which primary language is not English.
El grupo tiene las siguientes recomendaciones para el comité. Primero, para construir confianza con la comunidad.
The committee has, the group has the following recommendations for the committee. First, to have a better relationship with the community.
Que sean más transparentes y específicos con el presupuesto. ¿Cómo se va a distribuir el dinero?
You need to be more transparent and specific with the budget, how the money is going to be distributed.
En las audiencias del presupuesto que han pasado, no hemos visto con claridad cómo se van a distribuir los 6.3 millones de dólares.
In the past meetings, in the past budget meetings, we have not seen clearly how the 6.3 million dollars are going to be distributed.
Por eso exigimos saber cuál es el plan que se va a ejecutar para los aprendices del idioma inglés.
That's why we are requiring to know how the monies are going to be distributed for the English learners.
Segundo, que sean claros y transparentes con el plan que se elabore basado en la fuerza de trabajo y el ILL y el DILAC. En los consejos, perdón.
Also, second, also, to be clear and transparent in how you're going to be working with the council and DILAC.
Que el centro de seguimiento de los estudiantes explique a las familias las clases que tienen y expliquen la alfabetización de idioma nativo.
So, perdón, ¿me puedes repetir?
Sí. Que el centro de seguimiento, o sea, el welcome center, explique a las familias los tipos y clases que tienen para ir a alfabetización. O sea, cuando se van a inscribir en el welcome center, cuando llegan las familias.
So, yes, and also that the welcome center should explain to the families what type of instruction and what type of programs you're going to have when they sign in to, in Boston Public Schools.
También ofrecer más de lenguaje dual, o sea, más escuelas de lenguaje dual.
Also to offer more dual language schools.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Rondo. I'm afraid you're past your time.
Oh, it's because the translation is slow.
Yeah, you're past the four minutes, I'm afraid.
Oh, can I say one more, a little bit?
Sorry, we have other speakers waiting. Sorry, we have, we have other speakers waiting.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you so much. Gracias. Pasen buenas noches.
Thank you. Please share your written testimony and we'll distribute that to the committee. Thank you.
Por favor, animamos a que usted someta su, lo que usted desea, eh, por escrito.
Our next speaker is Alba Gonzalez.
Alba Gonzalez.
Buenas noches.
Evening.
Evening.
Mi nombre es Alba Gonzalez. Vivo en Back Bay y tengo tres hijos que asistieron a una escuela de inversión bilingüe, específicamente la Hurley.
Hi, I live in Back Bay and I have three children that went to an immersion school specifically Back Bay.
No, Hurley, sí. La razón por la que escogí esta escuela es porque para mí era muy importante que mis hijos se alfabetizaran en mi idioma natal, que es el español.
The reason why, this isn't very important to me, that's the reason why I chose this school because for me, it was very important that my children receive literacy in my native language that is Spanish.
Para que mis hijos pudieran comunicarse con mis padres y demás familiares que no hablan inglés, así como también para mantener nuestra cultura.
Um, like that, my children would be able to communicate with my parents that do not speak English and at the same time, to maintain our court, all our culture.
Para mí era tan importante que mis hijos pudieran hablar, leer y escribir en los dos idiomas que yo les enseñé a leer en español antes de que entraran al kindergarten.
For me, it was so important that my children learned how to read in Spanish that I taught them how to read before they even got to kindergarten.
Hoy en día, mis hijos se sienten muy orgullosos de poder hablar, leer y escribir correctamente en los dos idiomas.
Today, my children feel very proud that they can write, read and speak in both languages.
Y esto se debe a que me preocupé porque estuvieran en una escuela bilingüe como la Hurley.
And that is because I took it upon myself that they could be in a bilingual school like the Hurley.
Es por esto que estoy abogando para que haya más escuelas bilingües como la Hurley.
This is why I'm advocating to have, for there to be more English bilingual schools like the Hurley.
Que tienen este importante programa y así más familias puedan tener la misma oportunidad que tuvimos mis hijos y yo.
That some of the schools could have these programs and some of the families could have the same opportunities that I, that me and my children had.
Necesitamos escuelas multilingües que enseñen el idioma natal de los estudiantes.
We need multilingual schools that teach children their native languages.
Gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Ortiz.
Paula Ortiz.
Buena noche.
Good evening.
Buenas noches.
Momento.
One moment.
Sí, sí, este, mi nombre es Paula Ortiz. Vivo en Dorchester. pertenezco a la comunidad de padre de San Stevens. Mis hijos fueron a la escuela de Boston Public School.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Paula Ortiz. ¿Dónde que reside?
Dorchester.
I reside in Dorchester and I am part of the San Stevens.
Mis hijos fueron a la escuela de Boston Public School.
My children went to Boston Public Schools.
Lo que me motiva hoy a estar aquí es que he estado participando en algunas reuniones de San Stevens.
What motivates me to be here is because I have been participating in some San, San Stevens meetings.
Y he comprendido la importancia que tiene mi idioma, y mi idioma nativo.
And I have understood the importance of my native language.
En el caso de mis hijos que tuvieron la suerte de ir a la escuela que tenía programa bilingüe.
Um, and my children had the luck of going to schools where they have bilingual programs.
Gracias a eso, siempre tuvimos una buena comunicación familiar.
And so that, we always had very good family communications.
Porque yo no hablo inglés.
Because I don't speak English.
Recuerdo que cuando mis hijos vinieron de República Dominicana, podían comunicarse perfectamente con sus familiares.
I remember that when my children came from Dominican Republic, they could, they were able to communicate perfectly with their family members.
Por esta razón me uno a la petición de que se haga un plan claro para los aprendices del idioma inglés.
That's why I add my voice for the people that are advocating to have more bilingual programs for people that are learning English.
Y que se comience a implementar el idioma nativo en parte de nuestras escuelas.
And to start to implement native language in part of our schools.
Muchas gracias. Espero que mi voz sea tomada en cuenta.
Thank you very much and I wish that my voice is taken into consideration.
Gracias. My next speaker is Amada Ravelo.
Amada Ravelo.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Amada Ravelo. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de estar aquí con usted.
My name is Amada Ravelo. Thank you for giving me the opportunity of being here with you.
Tengo tres hijos y vivo en South Boston.
I have three children and I live in South Boston.
Como madre latina, quiero abogar para que las escuelas de Boston implementen el idioma nativo porque es muy importante en la educación.
As a Latin mother, I would like to advocate for the, for Boston Public Schools to implement dual language and native language because that is very important.
En mi experiencia, tuve que cambiar a mis hijas de escuela porque donde ellas estudiaban, no hablaban español.
In my personal experience, I had to change my, my daughters from the school that they were because they did not speak English.
Ellas estaban perdiendo su idioma nativo y a la vez perdiendo comunicación con la familia.
They were losing their native language and at the same time, they were losing communication with family.
Y no podía permitir que lo perdiera porque ella viene de una familia latina.
And I cannot allow that to happen because they, they came from a Latin family.
Donde solo se habla español y sus abuelos no hablan el idioma inglés.
Where they only speak Spanish and her grandparents do not speak English.
Para mí es importante que mantengan su origen presente y su identidad cultural.
For me, it's important that they keep their, their cultural background and their language present.
Porque se ha demostrado que ser multilingüe es de mucho beneficio para su crecimiento profesional.
Because it has been demonstrated that being multilingual is very important for their professional development.
Y yo sé que sí se puede. Muchas gracias.
And I know that, yes, we can. Thank you very much.
Gracias. Our next speaker is Susana Gonzalez, followed by John Mudd, Michael Heishman, and Bethany Moffey. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Susana?
Hola, buenas noches. Evening. Me escuchan.
Hello, good evening. Sí, le escuchamos.
Sí, gracias. Eh, gracias a todos por estar aquí y darnos la oportunidad de, de expresarnos.
Um, thank you very much to everyone to give us the opportunities to express ourselves.
Mi nombre es Susana Gonzalez. Vivo en la comunidad de Roxbury.
My name is Susana Gonzalez and I live in the Roxbury community.
Mi hija estudia en la escuela Ocean Garden.
My daughter study, my daughter goes to Ocean Garden School.
Um, mi experiencia en la escuela fue un, un poco incómoda.
My experience at school was a little uncomfortable.
Ya que mi hija tuvo una vez un pequeño inconveniente en la escuela.
Because my daughter had a little inconvenience once at school.
El cual me tocó ir a hablar con las autoridades.
Which had me having to go and speak with the authorities.
Al momento de llegar, eh, ninguna de las personas que me debían atender, eh, hablaban español.
At the time that I got there, none of the people with whom I needed to speak spoke Spanish.
Y no había ningún intérprete que me pudiera asistir.
And there was no interpreter to assist me.
Por lo que para poder comunicarme tuve que optar por utilizar el traductor de Google desde mi teléfono celular.
So, which ended up happening was that I had to use Google Translate from my cellphone.
Y, y el poco inglés que sé actualmente.
And the little English that I know right now.
Me sentí sumamente mal y decepcionada.
I felt very, I felt bad and I was decepcionated.
Porque si, me di cuenta de que si la escuela no es capaz de brindarme un servicio a mí como madre.
Because if the school could not give me, a service to me as a, as a parent.
Tampoco, mucho menos iba a ayudar a mi hija a comunicar y a mantener nuestro idioma natal.
So, it would not be able to give my, the support to my daughter in her native language.
En, en nuestra casa todos hablamos español.
Because at my house, we all speak Spanish.
Pero veo que desde que mi hija está en la escuela.
But I have seen that since my daughter is in school.
Cada vez entiende menos nuestra lengua natal.
She understands less our native language.
Y como madre hispana, pido, pido que usen de, del presupuesto.
And as a Hispanic parent, I want you, to encourage you to use from the budget.
Porque sí, sí lo hay.
Because there is possibilities.
Para que lo usen, eh, en un programa de alf, de alfabetización en nuestra lengua nativa.
To use it in literacy in our native language.
Porque sé que al igual que yo, hay muchas madres que están pasando por lo mismo.
Because just as myself, there is a lot of mothers that are going through the same.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Hi, as you well know, my name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime advocate for education reform in Boston. New job postings come out at this time of year, but are there new strategies to improve the racial, ethnic, and language diversity of teachers this year? As you well know, BPS has hardly moved the needle on staff diversity over the past decade. We still don't meet the minimum standards of 25% black teachers set by the Garrity Court Order about 50 years ago. And the percentages in Garrity are woefully out of date. I think we have all come to understand that BPS needs not only racial, ethnic diversity, but also language diversity. Years ago, I was shown school profiles that clearly laid out the gaps between the percentage of teachers by race and the percentage of students by race in an individual school, but also the gap between the language proficiency of teachers and the home language of the students in the school. BPS is producing data dashboards for everything these days. Why not a data dashboard that shows the status of the racial, ethnic, and language gaps between teachers and students by school, by region, and for the district as a whole? There are also important actions BPS could take immediately. If there are vacancies in single-language SEI classes, insist that replacement teachers speak the language of the students in those classes. Give priority to teacher applicants who are proficient in other languages for all open positions. Expand paratrainee programs like the ones happening at the Hernandez or the Parent Mentor Program at St. Stevens. There are many other ideas. The school committee has an enormous range of responsibilities. But progress on teacher diversity may be one of the most important steps in dealing with achievement gaps. Why not see if one of your members could become the specialist on behalf of the full committee to track teacher diversity issues, monitor progress during this hiring season, and make recommendations back to you? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Next, we'll hear from Michael Heishman, followed by Bethany Moffey, Jessica Gonzalez, and Rosie Hosking. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mr. Heishman?
Hello, I'm on. Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester. It's very difficult at every meeting to turn my 15-minute draft rants into a three-minute presentation and to find out I only had two minutes. Impossible. Oh, my God. I, I, I'm going to ignore the phone, ignore the phone. Well, March 15th, the Ides of March, an organizational chart has been publicized. Miss Skipper, mazel tov, mazel tov. Yay, hooray. There was a positive piece about school committee member Brandon Cadet Hernandez in the Boston Globe on March 7th. Marcela Garcia wrote, "He has already emerged as an outspoken voice and a body that typically does not show a willingness to push and seriously probe the district's decisions." Wow, what a put-down on our appointed committee. Yes, Brandon has stood out in comparison to the rest of his colleagues. However, I found that even he has been excessively polite and diplomatic and never, ever has he expressed anger. In comparison, the city council was always contentious. Why do they fight with each other? Why don't they just get along? This is what democracy looks like. When was the last time the disappointed body had a serious disagreement with each other? Never. How do they differ from each other? Get out your high-powered microscope. City councils are elected, oh, my God. City councils are elected accountable to the people. School committee members are appointed accountable to the mayor. Your job is to be civil and support the mayor superintendent and not ever to make waves. When potential controversy appears, hide quietly under the table. The citizens of Boston had lost confidence in the appointed body. Instead overwhelmingly voted to end this failed structure and replace it with a democratic accountable and elected school committee. Instead overwhelmingly voted to end this failed structure and replace it with a democratic accountable and elected school committee. The elected city council agreed with the citizens of Boston.
Mr. Heishman? Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time has passed.
I'm an old man. I know I'm running out of time. Uh, I'll send in my testimony to everybody for the general public, Kalas Timah.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Bethany Moffey.
Hello. Thank you so much for, for hearing us. We appreciate it. My testimony today is regarding the systematic dismantling of inclusion at the Henderson Inclusion School, particularly at a time when there is a district-wide move for all schools to be inclusion. And as so many of you know, for many years, the Henderson was the model for inclusion across the country. It was so successful. We had visitors from all over the world wanting to see what ince, successful inclusion looked like and how to replicate it. And like many schools, we've had an enormous uptick in inequities following the pandemic. And some of ours are universal, but some are specific to our population. We've had an exodus of families, teachers, and providers who were deeply committed to the mission of inclusion. People who had been there for years that left because of the neglect and lack of oversight by the district to identify and invest in strong leadership, committed to our, our model of inclusion, and to curb the violence at our school. Committed teachers who still remain there are not well-supported and they're getting really burnt out. In the absence of leadership who believes in and prioritizes inclusion, new teachers and staff are brought in who are not familiar with the inclusion model or given professional development in our inclusion model and culture. Excuses are made for inexcusable interactions between staff and students. Security putting their hands on students and threatening them. Teachers using inappropriate language and slurs in the presence of and directed towards students. Complaints are met with complacency and there's no follow-up, no accountability. There's been talk of opening resource rooms in the high school. Um, talk of finding a new brand, quote-unquote, for the high school. The only full-inclusion high school where my daughter could graduate from one day. The brand is inclusion, and that should be defended by the leadership in the district. School administration in the district have allowed egregious and violent, be, sorry, egregious and violent behavior to continue at the school with little support or intervention for the, for the staff and the teachers, just the directive to document the behaviors. The violence this year and last year has been traumatizing students and staff alike. It's creating an unsafe learning environment for students, all students, but especially students who are currently learning how to keep themselves safe. Like our daughter. Like our daughter, who we removed from the school, where she was included and thriving for eight years and put in a school where her teacher feels she doesn't belong and is holding her class back. We did this just to keep her body safe. And there's so many families with similar stories. The Henderson Model of Inclusion gave students with all types of disabilities, processing disorders, autism, a place to learn, to thrive, to belong. The Henderson should be the model for the district's move to inclusion for all schools, but instead.
I'm, I'm sorry, let's wrap up.
The lack of qualified, skilled staff and strong investigative leadership and the unchecked violence and our students being denied, they're being denied an environment where they're able to flourish and maximize their potential, basically violating their human rights. Um, we've reached out. We haven't gotten any response. I heard earlier the members of the new staff say you're committed to hearing critical feedback. Here it is. We would love to have these concerns addressed as soon as possible. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Gonzalez. I am a parent. My child is part of the Blackstone School as well as the St. Stephen Youth Programs. Um, I come here, you know, advocating, there's so many important topics that need to be talked about. And I'm so grateful, deeply grateful for the St. Stephen Youth Program that has helped me as a parent really, um, talk about these different topics. I am advocating that. Excuse me?
Excuse me, could you please turn on your camera? Pardon me, Chair.
There you are.
Thank you.
My camera's on. Do you see me? Now we do. Okay, awesome. My name is Jessica Gonzalez. I come here as a parent. I have a child who is in the Blackstone School as well as the St. Stephen Youth Program. I'm deeply grateful to be part of the St. Stephen Youth Programs. As a parent, they have supported me and my child in so many different ways. I can't even address them all here. There's so many important topics that I believe need to be addressed, but right here I'm advocating that in the budget, there is a priority and importance to address supportive services for our children, specifically around bullying. There has been so many incidents that have happened specifically to my child, um, being targeted at school, being jumped by numerous children at recess. And I truly believe that there is a lack of supportive services in BPS. Having one social worker for a number of different children, having lack of sufficient staff at specialties or recess. And I'm hoping that within this budget, there can be more services, um, for the children, you know, restorative justice. I, I hear that spoken about so many times, but true intervention for the children who are targeting others. I do not believe in discipline, just true intervention. Um, I've reached out to the operational leader, representatives. I've had countless number of meetings at my child's school. And there's just a lack of care, to be quite honest. Um, I feel as though the school system is scared to have these records of incidents on file. So instead they dismiss it and see it as conflict between peers. Um, again, I just really, really feel as though supportive services for our children need to be a focus in the budget, more social workers, more inclusion specialists, more, uh, student support services in whatever position that be. I have brought up so many different solutions that could be created other than positions that we know are hard to fill and funding and things like that, like social work interns, um, collaborating with playworks, collaborating with different community organizations. There's so many different solutions that I have brought up, and I just hope that some would be heard. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to even speak about this tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosie Hosking, followed by Elizabeth Ferens, Jessica Manna, Deidra Manning, and Michelle Carmel. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Rosie Hosking?
Hi, my name is Rosie Hosking. I have a first grader and a rising K-1 student at the Charles Sumner in Roselandale. I hope that my children will graduate from high school within the BPS system. I would like to start by amplifying what previous parents have said about the value of bilingual schools. I'm a naturalized US citizen. I'm half-English and half-Uruguayan. But I've lost touch with my Latina heritage as I do not speak Spanish. I would be so happy if my children could learn Spanish at school to connect with their classmates and communities and also access their rich South American heritage, which I have been unable to do myself. I testified at the February 1st meeting and stated then that I'm very much looking forward to the move for the Sumner and Philbrick into the renovated Irving Building in Roselandale. The move to upgrade and improve BPS buildings is very welcome. I also understand the ongoing need to merge school communities due to low enrollment and the ability to offer more resources to larger school communities. Clearly, the experience of both the Shaw and Taylor communities and the Sumner and Philbrick communities going through these boot, building moves and mergers could be a template for the future. Uh, we could be creating sustainable merger processes and a record of success that BPS could use for the next 10 years as the Green New Deal unfolds. Yet, during the February 1st school meeting, we heard BPS staff acknowledge they'd been aware since September there had been a lack of community engagement for the current mergers. Indeed, tonight, we heard from Dr. Tavares that it is her department's responsibility to ensure authentic community engagement and input, to build trust with the communities.
Twenty seconds.
And, um, Ms. Polanco Garcia also implored BPS leadership to listen to our families. Yet, things have not yet improved. We asked for community meetings by March 8th, and we have not yet received dates. We ask you to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Ferens.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Ferens. I'm a Roselandale resident, parent to a second grader, and the Sumner Family Council co-chair. I also want to add my support to the voice of parents who testified earlier about the importance of bilingual education. As a family medicine physician caring for Spanish-speaking families, I've seen the harm that the absence of bilingual education causes to kids, their parents, and their communities. As the kids are educated in English-language-only schools, many of them lose their native language schools, skills. And on a personal level, I would love for my daughter, who is a native English speaker, to have the opportunity to be bilingual. Now on to my original testimony about the ongoing lack of equity in the proposed merger between the Sumner and the Philbrick and the absence of the use of the racial equity planning tool. As Superintendent Skipper said tonight, equity is a through line in all BPS does, or at least it should be. However, we've repeatedly shared data that merging the Sumner and the Philbrick will concentrate the high-needs students in Roselandale in the merged school. We have yet to be told, despite our numerous requests since the merger was proposed in May of 2022, how BPS plans to mitigate the harm caused by merging our schools. Will we have more staffing for academic support, more reading specialists, more family liaisons? What specials will newly be offered? How are our communities benefiting from this merger? Our design team finally began work on February 6th, nine months after the merger was proposed. One of their early tasks has been to create our R E P T, basically from scratch. This is supposed to be done before decisions are made, not afterwards. And certainly not since you have lied to us and told us that the R E P T was done this summer. Why is the team doing it now if you did it this summer? Additionally, we've heard that it's not possible to keep our schools separate, even though there are temporary spaces for the sixth grade we need. Why are you rushing? We can only assume that you, that you chose our schools because you thought we would make trouble and you thought we wouldn't speak up. However, you could do these mergers thoughtfully and thoroughly. And our school communities would benefit from being held harmless while this work is done. Given all the transitions our teachers, staff, and administrators are experiencing, we shouldn't have additional financial struggles while we do this process. Please, please learn from our experience. Do better for future mergers that we know are a part of the Green New Deal. Do better for our students, our families, and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Manna.
Good evening. My name is Jess Manna, and I am a Sumner parent and Roselandale resident. Before I begin the testimony, I've prepared. I'd like to say that the rule is if there are more than 20 speakers, you get two minutes. 20 speakers or less, and you get three. I will be following that rule and taking three minutes. Additionally, the Spanish translation tonight was slower than usual. You did not give our Spanish-speaking community members the time and respect they deserved. Unfortunately, your actions tonight reflect your lack of genuine engagement with our Spanish-speaking community, day in and day out. Now on to the merger. As I've said in the past, I am supportive of larger schools. Right sizing the district, however, should be done with proper planning. Before any merger is voted on, there should be a written plan for all mergers. It is unclear to me why BPS is refusing to plan before they take action. This type of planning is not that difficult. It requires thoughtful analysis, but a capable leadership team should be able to do that. As we have made clear tonight and in the past, the current mergers are being done hazardly and causing harm to the communities involved. I will review some of the questions and concerns our community has with the Irving renovation. These concerns are a product of rushing this merger. I respectfully request that the school committee does not simply accept the answers you are given by BPS staff regarding these mergers. We have witnessed time and time again, BPS staff give you incorrect information. Please push harder, engage with our communities directly if necessary, and demand transparency. Our design team representatives did a walk-through of the Irving Building with the architects, architects and BPS capital, capital planning tonight. They were informed that the design phase is over and they are now in the construction phase. This design was complete with absolutely no community engagement. Ms. Tavares, I suggest you check in with your department about that because your department is failing based on the metrics you laid out tonight. The following is just a few of the issues with the design that we are told is final. The current number of classrooms does not seem to fit our merged schools, and the plan for the Sumner and Philbrick to fit in this building has not been made clear to us. The cafeteria is too big. There is more than enough space to support two lunch periods of 350 students each. We know there will be more than two lunch periods, and we could use that space for other needs. The auditorium is too small for full-school events. The Sumner only had an event for K-1, first and third, and the parents could not fit. Why not bump it out to create more space? Our school nurses have not been consulted about the design of the health office. And finally, the classrooms are currently between 700 and 970 square feet. By MSBCA standards, the classroom should be at least 750 square feet. There are also L-shaped classrooms, which is an inefficient layout for learning. And it has not been made clear to us why this L-shaped design was included or how it benefits our kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deidra Manning.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Deidra Manning. I am the parent of a Henderson School student and another daughter who formerly was a Henderson School student that I, with much regret, decided that I needed to pull her out, um, where she is now studying at a different school. This is my second time speaking before the school committee about conditions at the Henderson. I would like to echo all of Bethany Moffey's comments. Um, I also would like to agree with Ms. Manna, um, that we should have three minutes to speak. Um, if you set the bar at 20, one of the speakers did not show up. So we should have three minutes to get in some of this important information before the school committee's ears. Um, what I would like to say is that public education should uplift all students. I am a product of a public school education. Both my parents were public school teachers. I am not an educator in terms of being a professional, but I did teach Spanish III for six months at BCI. I know how difficult the job is, and I know that BPS has a lot of challenges. However, the conditions at the Henderson are simply unacceptable. I feel like it has been an international model and where Superintendent Skipper earlier said that BPS intends to continue on with the good works that have started under the purview of her predecessors. I feel like the Henderson should be a priority. It is a unique school where you have children as long, young as three years old, and you have students in the classroom skills or the transition program who are 22 years old. I feel the current leadership, whether it's the interim school leader or the assistant superintendent, who is supposed to be looking out for the interests of the school, are not doing what they are paid to do. I strongly suggest that Boston Public Schools get someone who has experience, and if you need two people, so be it. But there should be people who know how to teach children who have atypical abilities as well as people who have experience with a school that starts at a three-years-old and goes up to age 22. I feel it is critical that the district start doing something to lift up the community at the Henderson. Dismantling inclusive education at the Henderson is destroying a community. I have a tremendous amount of regret that we no longer see our friends, whether they be students of color, students with atypical abilities, and their families. We are suffering because I had to pull my older daughter, and I'm probably gonna pull my third grader and send her to a different school next year. Boston Public Schools needs to look out to the interests of all their students, and they need to maintain and improve on the inclusion services that are at the Henderson. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Carmel, followed by Michelle Pang, Courtney Feeley-Carp, and Katie Emery. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom.
Hi, my name is Michelle Carmel, and I am a parent at the Henderson Inclusion School. Um, I have an eighth grader, and up until this past September, I had a fifth grader as well. My family's been a part of the Henderson community for five years. I serve as a board member in the parent council and also as a representative on the school's governing board. I'd like to begin by saying that despite my forthcoming comments, I do believe that there are amazing staff members at the school working extremely hard and doing a great job despite all the current challenges. I'm here to testify because I'm concerned about the current state of inclusion and, more importantly, the future of inclusion at the Henderson. First, I'm concerned that the number of teachers with emergency licenses, which has led to the existence of classrooms in which neither teacher has special education credentials. For example, only considering the fifth grade and below, 20% of the teachers are operating on emergency licenses. This is worrying because the only qualification for an emergency license is a bachelor's degree in sound moral character. To have our vulnerable population have 20% of the teachers without demonstrated competence, credentials, and training is just too much. This is because at the Henderson, we have five students in every class with severe disabilities, and this is in addition to students with lesser disabilities. This licensing situation leaves us with three classrooms with only emergency special ed licensure and three classrooms with no special ed licensure at all. And again, this is only considering fifth grade and below. The law is being broken when it's written in I E Ps that students should have services delivered by a special education teacher, and there's no such teacher in the classroom. In a related issue, I removed my fifth grader from the Henderson in September because she was in a classroom with an unlicensed teacher. And I'm talking here about entirely unlicensed, not even an emergency license to be a lead classroom teacher for elementary grades. We addressed this issue at the level of the school administration, the regional superintendent, and the ombuds person to no avail, and eventually had to make the heartbreaking decision to withdraw. Furthermore, our school's governing board, on which I were representative, discussed deviating from the two-teacher-per-classroom model in the lower school despite the fact that our co-teaching model is actually written into our innovation charter. In sum, our current situation is a damaging deviation from the inclusion model that has proven so successful at the Henderson over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Pang.
Hello. Hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Pang. I would like to start by echoing the testimonies of Bethany Moffey, Deirdre Manning, and Michelle Carmel, who had just spoke. I have a son who currently attends K2 at the Henderson Inclusion Lower School. I started out this year with his two older siblings attending the Henderson Inclusion Upper School in second and fifth grade respectively. Hopefully, my concerns voiced here today will demonstrate why I why I chose to transfer them out. With the attack that happened on former Principal Lampron, I chose to keep my kids at the Henderson Upper. Given my kids' previous positive teacher experiences and with the hope of rebuilding. As current parent council treasurer and fundraising committee chair, I have personally made every effort to promote school unity and inclusion by organizing many school events as I can. I have met many incredible parents along the way. This year especially, I have felt a huge disconnect between administration and the parent body. Almost every school communication has been lacking empathy or inclusion in some way. From emails denying school breakfast for late students to administration suggesting removing par professionals and the two-teacher model from classrooms. The administration has seemed uninterested in upholding the innovation school plan. Most communication with administrators, I have personally felt like they are doing me a favor when I asked them to collaborate on S P C events. When parents have pressed the importance of fully inclusion after school, the administrators have responded with potentially partnering with a third-party business that has admitted to not having the capability of managing children with high needs. In the past two years, I myself have experienced racism against myself and my daughter as an Asian from an unlicensed general ed teacher. My child has lost four months of education loss from the same teacher. Neither of these incidents resulted in serious consideration from administration. Not to mention the safety concerns and violence that continue to arise at the upper school. Parents have mentioned incidents of visitors allowed inside the school where they chase down students for drug money, looking for fake pens from students.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
I'm afraid you're past your two minutes. Could you please wrap up?
Yes, I will. Sorry. Not to mention inaction of the school for not providing essential resources such as school books to high school students. I just want to ask the district to provide oversight and support and not allow the school to rapidly deteriorate in their inclusion model as well as the morale and safety of our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Feeley-Carp. Ms. Courtney with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you again. And I, my name is Courtney Feeley-Carp. I am a parent to a BPS third grader at the Henderson Inclusion School. And I don't feel it's necessary for me to reiterate the eloquent comments of my fellow parents that you've already heard from tonight, but I do share their concerns and I really want to reiterate the core issue here, and I will probably be more blunt than they are. We need leadership. We have not had it at all this year, and it is not just simply a dearth of leadership. It is negative leadership for those of us who believe in this mission. And I think that you should include the fact that all of us are here tonight with serious concerns is a representation of the parent and family community that is engaged in this school, engaged in its mission. And the pain that you heard from the parents who have taken their children out is real. And I want to underscore that human element tonight because they can talk about it with respect to their decision, but I will say I have seen their faces as they wrenchingly made that decision, and it was heartbreaking to watch. And I really can't say that enough. And we are probably in the position of having to make a decision like that sooner rather than later. And the core of this school has been its families and its community and its love for each other. And the lack of leadership is withering it on the vine, just as this district is promoting a more inclusive model. And it is heartbreaking. And we come here tonight because we don't know where else to turn. Any communication we have, I am labeled as the angry parent. I don't get responses other than terse comments. I, I'm at my wit's end, as is everyone else. If that is not clear tonight, let me be clear. We need strong leadership that believes in inclusion, doesn't just simply tolerate it. And we come here tonight looking for leadership from this body and this administration to help our school. And particularly as this superintendent unrolls a new organizational structure and has expressed a commitment to community engagement, I do want to acknowledge, as the Citywide Parent Council rep for the Henderson, her decision to come to a full meeting, which in my experience, no superintendent has done, and put herself before all the school's representatives, shows a commitment to more deeper engagement with the parent community and is much appreciated. But our school needs specific intervention.
Ms. Feeley-Carp?
People in this Zoom tonight, and I really hope that you understand and hear the complaints and the frustrations, but mostly the heartbreaking decisions that the lack of leadership has forced some families in this district to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is K D Emery.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening all. My name is Kim. I'm a Boston resident and a mom to a BPS student and a graduate. I'm lifting up equity concerns and disparities for students with 504s who are often excluded from consideration, like in the Reimagine BPS survey, the Special Ed Policy Manual, and the reviews conducted by DESI and the Council of Great City Schools Inclusion Report that excluded those who are eligible for services via a 504. Long overdue attempts to hold the district accountable for its systemic disarray are flawed right out of the gate when marginalized populations are pushed aside and their free, appropriate public education is disregarded. Review BPS's own, at a glance, student stats. Only students with an I E P are counted as students with disabilities. Why don't the 1,750-plus students with 504s matter in this data? BPS tries to explain that 504s are under the umbrella of special ed here. Did anyone here question the recent Great City Inclusion Report that intentionally excluded the 504-related concerns? BPS explains that 504 supports are not part of special ed budgets. Then how does a guidance counselor and regular ed teacher get trained to support 504 plans and accommodations? Where are the budget commitments for 504s? District families whose children's 504 plans are at best inconsistently implemented year after frustrating year need answers. Why are the numbers of students with disabilities disproportionately showing up on the D and the F lists at schools? Why should BPS families need to go to DESI to finally ensure a student receives fate via a 504? And this is what it looks like when the district is experiencing a period of reckoning?
Ms. Emery?
Not now. Who? When can opportunity gaps for our students with 504s be assessed and addressed? Please advocate and show students with 504s by your actions that they are not forgotten and they do matter. Pledge today to be an upstander for all students with disabilities. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first and only action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $710,670. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Are there any questions or comments about the Dr. Alkins?
Yes, not a question, but more or less a comment, I think, to reiterating what I've always iterated that within these grants packages, it would really be beneficial to see a check-in sort of scheduled, or if there are grants that are continuing, that we get an update as to what the progress has been from the previous investment so that we know that even if a program has not reached the benchmarks that it was striving for, at least we know where it has landed, and we can say like, all right, well, it can be a report on best practices. So I think what I'm looking for, to feel more confident that I'm, you know, voting yes on grants that go to really to students, to feel confident that I'm doing that with some level of responsibility. I feel like we still need in these grants packages, something that tells us what the results are from these awards. Just a comment.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Abstain.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
I'm actually going to abstain too.
Ms. LoPara? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is the Superintendent's revised fiscal year '24 budget recommendation. Before I turn it to Chief of Finance Nate Cuda for the presentation, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening comments. Superintendent?
Great, thank you, Chair. I'm proud to share our final proposed FY24 budget with you this evening. I'm really grateful to this committee, to the public for asking questions, for offering testimony, giving us input on the areas that either weren't clear or that you felt needed to have deeper investment. This is how we build the best budget possible for our student staff and schools. You know, tonight we'll share the update and that update will be reflected as we go through it of where that input has been taken and the changes that we've been able to make to you or for you. Through the proposed budget, we're investing in opportunities for equality, inclusive education, bilingual education, restorative justice practices, and social emotional supports, all of which are really to ensure that our young people have the tools that they need to recover, particularly the social emotional supports from the pandemic, you know, where they can heal and they can stabilize and they can succeed. We're also deepening our investment in our equitable literacy strategies, gaining our early college and career pathways programming. These will help our students to explore, gain valuable skills and experiences while they also get college credit, and they're able to have experiences with internships, all of which will help them to graduate and to make some of their dreams a reality. Our mission overall is to create a learning environment where all students have a sense of belonging. They feel valued, supported, and empowered to reach their full potential. Our proposed FY24 budget lays the foundation to do this, and we're proud to present it again this evening. Although we're presenting the budget, we've, you know, we've certainly seen through the Council of Great City Schools reports, our partnership with the state, and our own strategic plans that we have a great deal of work ahead of us. There's some immediate work that will begin in FY24, as we already have in FY23, but I've also asked the team to share with you at a high level some of our thinking and work for the future budgets, the FY25 and beyond. FY24 is our opportunity to transition, heal, and stabilize our district. Past few years, certainly, as we know, have brought a lot of instability for a number of reasons. It's been hard for everyone, educators, staff, families, and we see the impact every day in our schools. The pandemic and changes in leadership and key positions have left many feeling anxious inside of the organization and outside. In this budget, with the input of this committee, our families and community, from our staff, from our students and school leaders, we're building on the things that are working and strengthening the areas that need support. I've said many times that we can't do this work overnight, particularly the adaptive work, the deep work, and we can't do it alone if we really want to create lasting change in BPS. It's true that for too long in Boston and more broadly in urban education, we've put Band-Aids on problems rather than addressing the larger systemic issues. Over decades, this has made things worse, and we find ourselves today facing the hard realities of that deferred truth. It will take focus, measuring our progress, and creating sustainable solutions together for us to ensure the education BPS provides our students that they actually, you know, comes to fulfillment and provide them the opportunities to reach their great potential. That they actually, you know, comes to fulfillment and provide them the opportunities to reach their great potential. At this point, I'd like to again thank everyone and I will turn it over, uh, to Chief Cooter. I would also like to thank all of our staff. Um, all of whom are on this call and those that are behind the scene in our schools. Um, you know, off screen in our schools, in our central department, who have participated, contributed to the process. It's taken a great many hands and voices make all of this happen. With that, I will turn it over to Chief Cooter.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening. Members of the School Committee and Chairwoman Robinson. Thank you for the opportunity to present the superintendent's final recommended FY twenty four budget. Next week, we'll be asking you to support it with a yes vote on a total general fund budget of one billion. Four hundred and forty-five million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. As I mentioned earlier this evening, but I cannot emphasize enough. I want to express my appreciation for the members of the community and this committee for your feedback. Discussions and thoughtful and insightful questions. As with the superintendent, I also want to take a moment to thank all of our school leaders. Starting in November, our school leaders begin to engage with my team on the budget. Equal parts advocacy and inquiry. Technical proficiency and equity focused leadership. Our school leaders are important and loud voices for our students. I want to thank them for their tireless effort and advocacy. Based on those conversations and the associated feedback. We are presenting a revised budget proposal tonight. I believe that this budget represents the best use of resources to support our students. And will lead our district in the next fiscal and academic year. Today, our final proposal for your review in the form of budget tables. Is posted online and was shared earlier with the school committee members. Tonight's presentation summarizes the changes reflected in this proposal versus the original budget proposed. On February first of this year. In addition to your feedback throughout the budget hearings. The school committee's five goals and associated priorities. Were critical starting point for our budget. In creating the priorities for this budget, the superintendent and executive team align to the goals and values laid out by the school committee. And we continue to highlight the consistency between this committee's goals. And the superintendent's investment priorities. The superintendent has identified six priorities. District-wide inclusive educational opportunities. Strengthening our supports and programming for multilingual students. Ensuring every student has access to grade level materials through our equitable literacy work. Supporting our students' social, emotional health and wellbeing. Preparing our students for life after graduation. And strengthening the partnership with families and communities. All of these priorities must be looked at through an equity lens. We must in intentional about providing each student what they need to succeed. To further close opportunity achievement gaps for traditionally underserved students. And as the superintendent mentioned, this budget in a lot of ways serves as a transitional budget. In addition to the need to plan for the last year of ESAR. We received several reports midway through the budget process. So tonight we'll discuss not only the immediate actions that are funded in FY twenty four. But we'll also be presenting. A we see the longer term work that will inform our budgets in FY twenty five, twenty six and beyond. For those of you who are viewing the FY twenty four hearing for the first time, we wanted to provide you with an overall investment summary. The changes to our budget from FY twenty three. Can be broken down into three main categories. Strategic investments, increased costs and long-term sustainability. It's also important to note that tonight's revised budget proposal increases our FY twenty four budget proposal. From one point four three nine billion to one point four four six billion. This is now a proposed seventy-one point seven million dollar increase over FY twenty three. There are three categories of changes to this proposal from the prior proposal. The first is an increase appropriation for collective bargaining. Second is implementation of our sustainability strategy through changes to school budgets. And finally, where we've increased our alignment of central investments to community and school committee feedback. The overall six point seven million dollar increase in our proposal from February first. Is in response to cover the cost of additional collective bargaining increases for safety specialists. Custodians, bus monitors and the administrative guild. As part of our sustainability planning, we worked with schools to identify current school-based ESAR investments. Align to our strategies for inclusive education, multilingual learner program expansion or equitable literacy. And we are moving these positions onto the general fund. We feel that these are the positions that are most critical and necessary to secure these positions beyond the terms of ESAR. All schools received an allocation based on their enrollment of special education, multilingual learners. And students experiencing poverty. This process resulted in the moving of seventy FTE from ESAR onto the general funds. Simultaneously, we also shifted hold harmless support from the general fund to ESAR. Schools were not required to make cuts to services or supports for students. We will continue to maintain and increase community transparent. In maintain those services. We're also committed to community transparency around ESAR funds. This change applied only to schools that received hold harmless funds in FY twenty four. Which means that there were changes to ninety-five schools. A vast majority of our schools did receive old harmless funds. In total, we shifted thirty-seven, thirty point seven million dollars off of the general fund. Which included moving two hundred and fifty-five FTE from the general funds to ESAR. A lot of our initiatives are large scale, multi-year changes. We cannot address the work outlined in the Council of Great City Schools reports in a single fiscal year. We also know that pandemic recovery is a long-term commitment. Tonight's presentation will focus first on immediate actions. Those things will fund in FY twenty four. We'll also share how those investments were shaped by feedback from the community and by this committee. We're also going to talk about where we're going, the future actions that are needed beyond next year. We have a tremendous opportunity as a district to make the systemic changes required to meet the needs of our students. To begin tonight's discussion of FY twenty four, I'll now turn it over to Dr. Linda Chen.
Good evening. I want to thank our school committee members for your questions. And our community members for their comments. And also for the opportunity for us to ga- engage directly with many of you, particularly on the matter of expanding native language and bilingual programs. As well as inclusive education. I want to also, um, acknowledge and thank school committee member Garcia's. A sentiment that she shared with us as a leadership team. To listen with our hearts, escucha con tu corazón. That really hits home for me. Um, I think beginning with our, the voice of our student Zoe. Sharing how important it is to learn in two languages. And that the home language is such an asset to both a student's identity as well as to learn all subject areas in school. Also to our families who shared this evening, being able to navigate our system from the onset. With being provided the information on all native language programs that are available to their children. And supports that are available through bilingual staff at the school. Also to our community advocates who have steadfastly supported our communities for decades. And remind us of the urgency to act now. Particularly given our history in this state and bilingual education. And in the BPS specifically in special education, I could not agree more. As a multilingual learner myself, who did not have the opportunity to learn in my home language. And a former principal of a school with transitional bilingual, dual language and inclusion programs. Where we partnered with our Spanish speaking families so they could experience a community where their identities were affirmed and sustained. And their students' learning was accelerated due to the maintenance of their home language. In becoming biliterate and proficient in all subject areas in both English and Spanish. All that being said, I want to highlight some areas of the budget that reflect concerns we've heard. That includes both the six point three million dollars in additional investments. As well as other areas of the budget where we either have ongoing expenditures from this year that will continue. Or we made some trade-offs with our current budgets to strategically repurpose and alignment of our port priorities to expand bilingual education. Chiefly, we made adjustments to include multiple strategic investments. To support community engagement, educator pipeline and support and native language resources. On this slide, you'll see some of these, um, commitments. Of the supplemental funding for our dual language programs that I've mentioned previous in previous hearings. As well as the additional funding for seed money for schools that will begin to plan for dual language programs that the superintendent also mentioned earlier. I wanted to highlight also a few other investments outside of the six point three million dollars of additional events, investments. We currently have a contract with MABE, Massachusetts Association of Bilingual Education, to specifically support our dual language schools. We also have ongoing supports with the Vietnamese and Haitian Creole programs. Where we centrally fund, um, also I would add, um, our, um, horseman programs as well. For deaf and hard of hearing dual language programs where we are supporting curriculum development and professional learning. We certainly want to expand that in coming years. We also, as previously mentioned, as part of our six point three million dollars of additional investments. We've transitioned our bilingual family specialists from ESAR onto the general fund. A, a foundational piece to buy its expanding bilingual programs. Is investing in engagement with our families to help them understand, support and advocate. And I so appreciate the families who came out this evening to advocate for bilingual programs. I wanted to share some new updates in terms of bilingual investments. CFO Cooter mentioned earlier in his remarks in the budget hearing. But we are going to create a new bilingual program department. That is focused specifically on building out our bilingual programs. Those include transitional bilingual. A heritage language as well as dual language programs. We also want to acknowledge our stakeholders and partners who have shared. Um, how important it is to look at SCI language specific programs. To further develop them into transitional bilingual programs or even dual language programs at some point. In order to support our multilingual learners with disabilities, as well as our multilingual learners with reading needs. We're also training, um, and beginning a program for, um, ten bilingual teachers and rules based reading or Orton Gilliam based reading. We also have a new native language assessment coordinator. This is critical. This will sit in the office of data and accountability to ensure that we have. A battery of assessments so that we can fully, um. Assess students proficiency and content area in their home language. We also want to make sure that we can begin to introduce. If it is new to some families, bilingual programming in the summer. So that they can experience what it's like to learn in two languages and all the advantages that it brings. You've also heard us talk about this life, social workers in previous budget hearings. On the next slide. I want to also share some clarifications around our work with multilingual learners with disabilities. Again, I want to acknowledge the stakeholder engagement in this process. Where we will have a new director for multilingual learners with disabilities that will have a dotted line reporting to both. The multilingual and multicultural office as well as the office of specialized services or special education. This is in addition to the previously allocated positions. I want to also share that embedded into our special education budget are bilingual psychologists. And also an expansion of working on native language evaluations. So that we can truly assess the needs of our students in the referral process. Also, I wanted to share that we will be repur- repurposing a current vacancy. In our newcomer assessment and counseling center. Um, they're called research and assessment specialists. So that there is someone who has a special education license as well. Many of our, some of our newcomers come into the center. While they don't have an IEP because often they're new to this country. Um, but we want to make sure that we have someone on the team who specializes in this and is a liaison. To the special education office so that we can best provide transition supports to these students. Also, to many points that were made in this engagement process. We have many positions that I've been talking about. However, we really need to make sure we have dedicated investments in recruitment and pipeline. So with that, we also made some changes to our budget to make sure that we have. A recruitment pipeline manager for bilingual teachers and paraprofessionals. With that, we also, I think, mentioned earlier that we will add four equity and accountability managers to support our regional model. So that every one of our regions has that support for compliance. And to ensure that we have certified teachers in classrooms for students. We also added a hiring specialist for both, um, multilingual and special specialized services. To make sure that we have a partner that sits inside. Um, the Office of Human Capital dedicated to these groups of educators. There are some ongoing, um, expenditures that we've had that will continue into this budget year. Including teaching positions at three schools and bilingual paras at other schools. Last time we shared that we made a commitment in our proposed budget for five bilingual paras. And we've doubled that to ten bilingual paras in this revision of our final budget submission. We also have five heritage language teachers as part of our existing budget for next year. That we will be dedicating to, um, high schools. Move on to the next slide here. In terms of additional immediate efforts as it relates to inclusive education. That also includes staffing in our schools to ensure. That they, that students have access to the least restrictive environment or more inclusive environments. While also ensuring, um, you'll see here that we have additional staff to support other schools. To ensure that they have supports for reading as well as multi-tiered systems of support. A foundation that we must lay. In strong ways for next year. Is around tier one curriculum in all content areas and professional learning. To ensure that we consistently implement with fidelity. So that our students have access to grade level culturally and linguistically responsive curriculum. That they deserve, which is also what we are doing in equitable literacy. We have also included specific reading intervention training so that our students can get more support. Before being referred so that we have all the opportunities for students to succeed and we know how we can specifically sport, support students with disabilities. Part of the work with inclusive education is also making sure that we have staffing and pipeline. So with that, we have also added a position that works with the Office of Human Capital to ensure that we have an inclusive. Um, education staffing specialist. As well as a specialist that sits in the Office of Human Capital to ensure that we can, or excuse me, with, um, planning and analysis. To ensure that we can, um. Look to the infrastructure for current programmatic assignments. The Council of the Great City Schools report on special education. Was loud and clear about how we, our current practices around categorical assignments. So we will also make sure that we have the supports to provide the improvement. To provide the improvement of the IEP development process. We'll move on to the next slide. We're also investing in key positions to centrally support. Our students across our regions. And you'll see here, these are key positions that will support that work. I think we've discussed this previously. In some cases, these positions are one to one while all other positions are one liaison to two regions. Let's move on to the next slide. Here we are using Essar funding. With about two million dollars to make sure that we have the ability. I think there are two key fundamental investments around Essar. One is building the pipeline and retention strategy, but also around infrastructure and technical infrastructure. And here we are making sure that we wisely invest our Essar funding to make sure that all of our. There's a term called interoperability, but it just means that all of our systems can talk to each other. So that we can efficiently gather data in one place without going to multiple places. And the more we are able to drill down on our data. The faster we can make sure we are clear on what's happening in terms of our ability to self monitor our work. With that, I will turn the time over to my colleague, Dr. DePina.
Thank you, Dr. Chen, and good evening again, everyone. In the area of staff retention, we've taken immediate actions of expanding our retention programs. And adding support to reduce the attrition rate of educators of color. These action includes investments in the Keith Love Educators of Color Peer Mentoring Program. For second and third year teachers and counselors. This program is named after Keith Love. Was a former BPS head of school who was a role model for many of us male educators of color in BPS. That was a champion for peer mentoring and retaining educators of color. We've also added a retention specialist role to have a laser focus on staff retention. We're also offering mass tests for educator licensers licensure or the known as MTEL tests. Preparation for staff working under emergency licenses. In the area of teacher professional development and support. We've expanded our new teacher development program. Our culturally and linguistically sustaining practice training. And offering professional development for schools transitioning into the inclusion model. Next slide, please. Other immediate action steps we have taken. Center around internal educated preparation programs. And staffing support with the hopes of increasing a pipeline of future educators. To assist with increasing our pool of bilingual educators. We're offering our accelerated community to teacher program. To support educators with obtaining their initial licensure. We have our BPS teaching fellowship program. And the teacher cadet program to increase mentoring. Opportunities. The paraprofessional test preparation program is another way of attracting candidates to the field of education in the BPS system. Actions we've taken around recruitment include hosting demonstration opportunities for pipeline programs. Finally, we've increased staffing to focus specifically on Office of Multicultural and Multilingual Education pipelines. As well as establishing an inclusion, an inclusion staffing business partner. That will focus specifically on the Office of Special Education and O M M E. Next slide, please. To address infrastructures in our facilities, we've strengthened our partnering with the Green New Deal. We've engaged in an industry standard facilities condition assessment of our school buildings. And set the foundation for our facilities priority plan. In addition, we've expanded our environmental services in BPS. And through our city, and through our city capital budget. We've invested in our security infrastructure with door alarms and security cameras. In our transportation department, we've invested technology upgrades to improve routing and collecting ridership data. Bus electrification has expanded and we continue to focus on recruitment, hiring and training of bus drivers and bus monitors. In our food nutritional services department, we've taken action on waste management and composting. As well as the good food purchasing program. Next slide, please. With regard to action we've taken within our student support division in Office of Safety Services. We've increased the number of supervisor attendance so that they're aligned with the regional structure. And through the succeed Boston program, we've expanded bullying prevention and intervention initiatives. In addition, we've expanded the use of of access to RJ practices. With the addition of nine FTEs that will support the 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 resort of justice practice unit. And we've developed peer mediation programs and expanding student mentoring programs. In the Office of Safety Services, we're expanding the the internal Boston Public Schools Office of Emergency Management. Please note that there are no resources in this budget allocated to the MTSS tier three support resources model. That includes the community connection coordinated positions under consideration. I just want to repeat that there are zero dollars allocated to the community connections coordinated positions. I'll now turn over the next portion of the presentation to my colleague, Dr. Tvaras. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DePina. In order to support. Deeper communication and engagement with communities, we've added additional specialists. For the family hotline that includes additional language support. Translation and interpretation have expanded their access for families. As well as really supporting the regional model. Through the investment in family engagement facilitators. I also want to share. How the deepening of engagement is part of the reorganization. Including a chief of community of engagement. Which really focuses on community partnerships. So really the public facing part of the work. And our chief of family advancement. That really focuses on the school based and expanded learning for our students. For equity strategy and opportunity gaps. We've also fortified the regional model. By adding equity specialists. To support the structure. And the capacity of an office of equity to deepen equitable practices in schools. By expanding the way in which they support schools. And finally, the reorganization of resources. For greater alignment and impact across our divisions. Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, we're at an interesting pivot point as an organization. The superintendent presented her leadership team earlier this evening. And this team is equipped with new external assessments from the Council of Great City Schools. As well as upcoming planning tools for the Green New Deal. We're also bolstered by resources committed to our schools through the city of Boston. And this creates the conditions for us to make significant progress to close opportunity achievement gaps. And we are the starting point of a long term systemic change. With that context, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Chen to discuss a lot of the work we're doing for future planning.
Thank you. So a few highlights in terms of future planning for our budgets. As the superintendent has mentioned earlier, the Council of the Great City Schools report. On special education had a recommendation for multi year transition to the to us being a fully inclusive district. We have reflected on that and would like to adopt that moving forward, which means we will have a very articulated. Process for implementing. Inclusion along with and in alignment with our collective bargaining agreement with the Boston Teachers Union. As we also want to do, we will continue with our equitable literacy work. This is long term constant work, which is always making sure that we have. High quality tier one curriculum. That is implemented with fidelity and that we have. Resources available for all of our schools, not only the curriculum, but also the training so that our schools can focus. All of their energies on our students and families. And we are also going to continue to invest in multi tiered systems of support that include both. Social emotional learning as well as specific academic learning. So that we can strengthen the supports that we provide for every student. Prior to referral processes. Also, we will continue to expand our bilingual program. Investments to ensure that we have access to native language supports. Throughout all types of bilingual programs, heritage language, transitional bilingual and dual language programming. We also want to make sure that we continue to have investments. That ensure that we're not only in compliance with and can monitor our multilingual learners with disabilities, but to make sure. That we have district monitoring dashboards, which is a commitment that I referred to earlier. And last but not least, we want to make sure there are coherent supports to schools. To ensure that there is high support and high accountability through our regional support model. Now I'll turn the time over to my colleague, Dr. DePina.
Thanks again, Dr. Chen. In the future fiscal year budgets for the operations division. Will be proposing investments in the following areas. First, investments to support learning environments for school based staff and students by continuing to invest in HVAC. Outdoor education spaces. Playgrounds and critical infrastructure repairs. When the facilities condition assessment and priority plans are complete, they'll inform future projects for our school buildings. Continued investment in training for our food nutritional services staff to perform onsite cooking in our schools. We're currently in the process of moving to an automation of the BPS employee ID creation process. More investments may be needed to support this infrastructure. We'd like to expand the electric vehicle pilot and expand the BPS Office of Emergency Management. As I mentioned during the last school committee meeting. We've begun a long overdue strategic planning process for the Office of Human Capital as well as the BPS Finance Division. After the plans are complete, we'll be proposing investments that may be needed to implement industry best practices. Internal restructuring, improved technology infrastructures. And work functions. Improvements in workflow within these departments. Across BPS departments and very importantly between these two departments and other city departments that we heavily rely on. That may negatively affect our work. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chief Kuter.
Thank you so much. As we've mentioned before, all of the materials from tonight's presentation, as well as all the materials from prior budget hearings. Are posted online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. This is the last of the school committee hearings or presentations on budget before the final vote. Which needs to occur on the fourth Wednesday of March. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Chairperson Robinson for your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for their final questions and comments. Mr. Carter Hernandez. You're muted.
You missed all my gratitude. I was just saying thank you for the presentation. And I'm trying to figure out where to start, but I guess I'll start here. It's a bigger budget than we saw previously. I think mostly impacted by collective bargaining. Adjustments, but it sounds like some other things. So. I'm going to go back to one of my first questions when we started this journey, which is how many new headcounts? Are in, were in the former budget and how many new headcounts are in the current budget?
David will pull up the FTE numbers overall changes, but I did want to confirm. The overall increase in the appropriation request for tonight is for the collective bargaining amounts. The other changes that we've talked about and proposals were trade offs that we made within the budget. Not increasing to overall. And also just note on the slides, we highlighted the FTEs that have moved to Essar. As part of the work with schools, but David has the total budgeted FTE numbers changes.
Yeah, so this budget reflects ninety three point seven full time equivalent. Position increases, which is not impacted by the additional funding. So it's ninety three point seven both before and after.
Copy. And then just to clarify, how many of those? Let me then actually ask this or ask it a little bit different. In our current structure. And I, I believe I have the answer to this question from previous memos, but I maybe just for the record. How many current vacancies exist in the system? General education teachers, E N L, special ed and counseling. Approximately.
I believe I have that number in the.
I was sorry, I was.
Yeah, thanks, Ray.
Want to keep going? No, I was just gonna say for the twenty two twenty three. School year, when we look at our guarantee positions on the dashboard, we are just under a hundred, but that's. Again, for this year, we're talking forward looking, which we'll have to look at.
Yep. And I'm thinking, I guess, more specifically, because if we zoom out, not just the guarantee positions, but it's, I mean, we're nearing. Five hundred position vacancies. Around our teacher workforce and counseling workforce, if I'm reading the numbers correctly.
Correct, sorry.
That's what I thought. And so you'll hear me and I'm a little bit of a broken record on this. And so it's some of this is concern. That I, I just want to make sure gets out there and some that I don't know if we're going to be able to adjust for. But you know, like, this is our recovery strategy. In many ways, because it's how we're spending Essar funds. And I've been. Since we received the funds, trying to advocate for. Different ways to use it, right? Like bonuses for hard to staff schools, retention bonuses to stop attrition and stop bleeding, attendance incentives for kids. I would rather see the money in people's pockets than allowing us to punt for another year around. Some of the real issues here, which is. You know, we. In many ways, don't have the workforce to operationalize the system the way it is currently designed. That's what happens when you have all of these vacancies. And obviously, which we've talked about sort of at nausea without a clear plan, but like we are operating too many schools. Which I think also leads to why we're unable to fill all of the vacancies and run the system at scale. The question here is then around the seventy heads who are moving off of Essar. Or the two, rather, the two hundred and fifty five that are being moved off the general fund. How many of, and then on to Essar? How many of those are currently vacant? And what does that sort of mean and look like for for next year?
Thank you for that question about the positions moving on to Essar. I don't have an analysis on the vacancy rate for those positions as we just finalized. The exact roster, but I, what I will say is we are working with schools to repurpose. Any Essar funding that's for vacant positions, right? And not have them hire someone for just one year. That could look in different schools that looks in a variety of different ways. So some schools are thinking about hiring building subs. Which are good temporary positions and actually are nice pipelines for future teachers. Others are using them for stipends or supplies or other programming for students. So that's really been our focus when we're seeing those vacant positions on Essar. Budgets is as much as possible pulling those down and using that funding for something. Different. And we're in the middle of planning that with all of our schools right now.
And then just sort of to push a little harder here for clarity, the two hundred and fifty five. Full time positions that get moved to Essar and based on the slide, it's eighty teaching positions and a hundred and seventy four. Other than teaching positions. As we do the future thinking, this wasn't in the future plan. Like, what happens to those positions when Esser runs out? And is this foreshadowing folks being accessed, or is this foreshadowing that we're going to have to request new funds in order to cover this decision?
I appreciate that question. And I think the answer is really going to vary by school. You know, as we do the reimagine school funding project, the inclusion work and the work with OM, we talk about them like they're three different projects and sometimes, but they're they're really one project with membership across all three groups who are working together. So as we're collaborating with the community right now about the reimagine school funding project and thinking about positions that we might propose beyond school budgets for the FY twenty-five budget cycle, we might see some overlap between investments in a reimagined school funding system and those positions that are currently on Esser. And in those moments, we'll be really glad we've preserved them and we haven't had any attrition or turnover. And we can then bring those positions back off of Esser next year. There may also be positions that we can use to close vacancies and, you know, save positions without actual transition in staff, and that will also be a productive outcome. And I think a lot of our work over the next six months in finance is going to be running this analysis and making sure we're set up for next budget season with those clear intersections documented. So that our superintendent and this body are ready to make those tough decisions next sort of winter and spring.
Right. I would also, I would also add that there'll be another set of investments for next year. And I think one of the things we want to look at, you know, is the overlap and analyze kind of what has shifted on the asset from the school side to be able to sort of see other areas of investment that for next year we would make that would not result in that position, you know, not being restored. I think also as we start to accelerate in the Green New Deal and you start to get some of these key reports on mergers and conversions and so forth, the right sizing of the system starts to happen. So I think that is going to be kind of a number of things in the mix. Additionally, you know, you've heard me say kind of zero-sum budget at Central, meaning that, you know, we'll be really requiring our central work to align and very similarly to the schools, it has to align. So there's probably going to be some some shifting and efficiency there as well. So I think there's not going to be one particular strategy that we invoke around the positions that moved on to Esther, but rather a collection of things as we move to transform the system.
I know I'm out of time, but I, I wonder, and maybe it's before we vote. It is hard to vote on a budget that we know, we know will have such a serious cliff without a little bit more clarity around what it is that we're willing to do. And maybe we're just sort of afraid to say the hard thing and we want to not say it. But it, it just seems like we're creating such a massive cliff for the general fund without a little bit more of a sober conversation around what that looks like, whether that's an accelerated timeline around mergers and consolidations, which is like something real that we might have to face, or a commitment to a phased-in plan where we're going to have to sort of phase out this spending over a series of years. I don't, I don't have it, but I'm not hearing it. And so it makes voting on a budget like this with such a serious cliff looming feel of really risky for kids and the system with and requires me to have to press a little bit more to understand sort of clarity around future thinking. Like, it just feels fiscally irresponsible to be like, well, we'll see what happens next year. It's like we are, we are literally designing a cliff. And I'm just not sure what we're willing to do to adjust for it in a single fiscal year.
Right. I think that the, I think the strategy of the shift is already kind of impacting schools and school leaders and communities to think about the prioritization. The fiscally responsible thing is making sure that the priority areas that we know are going to be multi-year initiative and or are have been flagged, you know, through the reports and the audits, that those things are in fact being taken care of. And those are a lot of direct service to students. So that's fiscally, fiscally responsible. And I think that's, you know, kind of the shifting over. I think what's left to be seen, you know, is certainly what the analysis of sort of some of those positions look like. You know, we, we have some things we want to look at, like single, single building admin and things like that. There might be other ways that we can creatively support. So I think those are things that, you know, our budget is very early. It's certainly predating a lot of the reports we're going to get in terms of facilities conditions report, the, the design reports. We have this tension, right, that we live with of hearing communities come before us, the school committee asking us to be very thoughtful and in invoke a healthy community process in any of these decisions. So accelerating that often takes that completely off the table. So I think what we struck was a middle chord that is allowing us sometime to be able to do that. And at the same time, be able to get some of the merger consolidations right in terms of the process. You know, in working through them and be informed rather than make conjecture around the building, you know, the facilities, conditions, and the design work.
All right. I'm a hundred percent out of time. I have more questions. I will come back. Thank you so much.
Dr. Alt.
Thank you. I appreciate a little bit of the the more detail into the timeline for these, you know, for these investments. Still, what I'm a bit concerned about is actually the, the timeline for the creation of these positions and just our abilities to be able to fill them. And so I, I don't know if there's necessarily a question in there, but more of a concern around being able to get a direct, like a new director for multilingual students with disabilities, being able to hire these equity specialists and you know, the recruitment process that's going to take for that. And, you know, quite frankly, where are we going to, to, to get them? Historically, we've had a problem, you know, recruiting teachers from, from underrepresented backgrounds. So it is a concern. You know, of our more or less the feasibility to be able to accomplish this.
So the, so I think, you know, we share, we share the urgency and the concern for some of these positions. I think that what you've seen in each of what the deputies presented is that there's also a strategy explicit in their area pipeline and recruitment. And so there is an investment in those areas as well to be able to expand, you know, how we are, you know, where we're recruiting from, where we get, you know, where we put our job descriptions out, alliances that we can forge to be able to get the position and to do it at a more systemic level. So I think, you know, we, we feel like that's the part that we're pushing and working on so that we, you know, Boston's early actually in the process. Our budget is much earlier than most districts. So we have a unique opportunity both in retaining the educators we have, if they're educated of color, working through with them, any issues that might exist around certifications or, you know, becoming solid in the job with a job offer. We, we've begun that process in already kind of this year using some extra dollars to do that. So I think we're in a very different position than we were last year at this time. I also think that we'll start to see, you know, with kind of the phasing of Esser districts across, you know, the nation will start to cut positions and look at positions differently. And so I think that will naturally create a little bit more of a pool than what we've experienced. We're working hard with the post-secondary's, you know, to create particularly unique pipelines that we haven't had before. You know, and looking within BPS as a way to, again, be able to, from a retention standpoint, be able to have paraprofessionals have opportunities they haven't had in the past. Teachers have opportunities they haven't had in the past to be able to move into other kinds of positions. So I think we're trying to hit it from all sides. But the most important thing is that we focus on our positions that we believe are going to be the biggest lever of change in the district. And those certainly have now been moved on to the general budget. So those become kind of priority one. And then the second are obviously the ones that are going to build capacity, be it our restorative justice practice coaches, be it our equity specialists. You know, those are all capacity builders. And, you know, I think you offer a unique opportunity for somebody that's looking to do that work, maybe inside, outside of the classroom, who knows?
Thank you. I'll wait to come back around with some other questions.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Gracias, Marlon. Gracias a todos por el esfuerzo que han hecho con el presupuesto.
Thank you very much to everyone with the job that you have done with the budget.
Me preocupa mucho y es la pregunta que tengo la línea de tiempo. Vi que estoy viendo que como acciones inmediatas se han establecido tres diferentes posiciones.
I am very concerned with the timeline. I have seen that they, that they have established three new positions.
Porque estoy viendo que estas tres posiciones están bien relacionadas con el acceso, con el idioma nativo, con la aplicabilidad de la alfabetización al idioma nativo.
And I'm very concerned because I'm seeing that these three new positions are very, and very close with the literacy with the native language.
Primero, la creación de, de la creación de un departamento de programas bilingües que estaría en OM.
First, the creation of a program or the program directorate, the a department.
Segundo, un gerente de reclutamiento y tercero, un especialista de contratación para OM, o sea, el departamento multicultural y multilingüe.
Second.
Gerente de reclutamiento.
A manager, a recruitment manager. And third, a specialist.
Entonces nosotros, por la experiencia que hemos estado viendo, tenemos, hay un proceso, un protocolo que dura bastante tiempo cuando vamos a elegir, cuando se va a elegir una persona para ocupar una posición. Entonces yo lo veo como una acción inmediata que ustedes están diciendo lo que van a hacer.
So I have seen that this is like a protocol, the, and steps that we need to take. And that we have spoken about that we need to take. And now I'm seeing it that this is like an action that you are going to take immediately.
Entonces cuál sería la línea de tiempo que ustedes han pensado para conseguir esto y empezar definitivamente con los programas para, para los aprendizajes del idioma inglés en alfabetización al idioma nativo? ¿Cómo, cómo, cómo va a ser esto?
So
¿Cuál es la línea de tiempo?
So what is the timeline that you have in mind in order to deal with the literacy and for the net, for the native, for the native language and English language speakers? What is the timeline?
I think Dr. Chen is going to weigh in on this one.
Thank you for the question, School Committee Member Garcia. The timeline is very important. Some of the positions are contingent upon the budget being approved and then we'll be able to post. And some of them are trade-off positions of our current budget. So we are working on making sure those are posted as soon as possible. In addition, we also are working with the Office of Human Capital to figure out if there's some intermediary supports through contractual services. So that that will bridge the time before a manager, especially the, the positions for hiring managers before they come on board, that there's some way to ensure that we have consistent supports until the permanent supports arrive.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief Cooter and Mr. Bloom and, and all the others who presented tonight and for your many months of work on this budget. This is a process that starts back in the early fall where you're gathering data and then meeting with school leaders. I'm very struck by, you know, having done this a few years, very struck about when we hear from schools and school leaders and when we don't hear from schools and school leaders. And particularly, you know, quietly, not necessarily always in public comment and the school leaders that I've spoken to are pleased with this budget. And you know, we have made, the district has made, and we have supported by the past couple of budgets, the decision to effectively invest Esser in soft landings under the theory that you know, Esther was designed to limit learning loss and help students recover. That's what Congress said. It was a setup for the majority of it. And the district has made the decision to do that by saying students, we better coming back to the schools they were used to versus making a bunch of changes towards it. I'm a financial professional. I've been my entire career and I remain deeply concerned over what we're facing the next couple of years, not just us, but districts across the country. I understand the decisions you're making about moving some of the gentle fund and where we go from here, but we have some very hard choices to make in the next couple of years. The, the financial support for soft landings are not going to be there, and we have declining enrollment. So we have to face that hard reality. I mean, said that, I'm also very aware of our structure under the system that set us up, which is superintendent presents a budget to begin in February, the fourth Wednesday of March, we have to vote on it. If we do not pass a budget, and this is the chance of the superintendent to make a final recommendation, if we don't pass a budget, then the superintendent's original budget is the one that moves forward to city council. And so I was really interested in hearing tonight the differences in the budget and how the community and school committee input was reflected in that. So I appreciated the slides about native language. I appreciate the slides about ELL. I appreciated a number of the operational points you made. But Superintendent, I have a specific question for you, and that is since the budget was being originally developed in December and January as it laid out to schools, we've received four pretty hard-hitting reports, right, about special ed, transportation, student safety, and data from several different sources. And there's serious reports requiring serious conversations about which recommendations are you accepting? Which ones are you moving forward? Are you implementing now? Were you considering, are you implementing in the future? Because they've given us a roadmap of how to improve the district. And so I have to ask, do you, Superintendent, feel that this budget reflects the key priorities from those four reports? In other words, are we fiscally providing for the solutions that have been suggested to us in a roadmap? As we look at those four together, because all of these things intersect, right? Transportation intersects with special ed, safety intersects with them all, data. We've, we've seen, we've seen the problems that we're having with data. And I did appreciate Mr. Cooter that one of the things highlighted tonight was a better data warehouse, including using the ed-fi language so that systems can actually talk together, which is the right way to move forward. So glad to see a commitment there. But Superintendent, how do you feel this budget reflects the priorities laid out? How do you want us to think about this budget in context of those four reports where we're pretty much the key areas? We're focused on, in addition to, and I just want to make this last case, still concern over the lack of an updated facilities plan and Green New Deal plan. Still concern over December is just too late for us to us for us to receive that report. If we're going to be making hard choices next year. But getting back to Superintendent, your thoughts on this budget reflecting priorities of the reports?
Right. So I think I think that's actually one of the key questions. I think um, you know, this is a this is a transitional budget on a number of levels. Um it's a transitional budget as we lay foundation in some of the like bigger adaptive work that has to be done, particularly in academics. Um where we, you know, where we've made the commitment for inclusion and and that's been, you know, that's throughout the report. Uh certainly, um it's, you know, increasing access to native language and bilingual education. Um early college and career. I think, you know, when we look at sort of the report and the recommendations, um this is a good transitional budget for beginning and and kind of laying the groundwork for um the key recommendations um in most of the reports. The technical solutions that are offered are the recommendations in the report. Some of those are just easier to accomplish. They're one-offs or they're kind of the immediate. Those are also reflected in here. I think, you know, what will need to happen, and we kind of gave a glimpse in more long term, but to save the following budget, what might we need to do? A lot of that adaptive work is starting to happen in the planning. Uh but we don't do it in isolation. We have to do it, you know, we're still meeting DESI on a regular basis. We're still reaching back to the Council of Great City Schools. We're looking at some of the work that's happening in other districts um as a model. So again, some of that work is not going to be something we snap our fingers and we have the plan for. It in, we have to be comfortable with the idea that we're going to have to pivot and shift in the future budget to make sure that that work happens. But I think this is a great foundational budget, solid. It gets at the main points of the technical solutions we need, um such as like the safety, uh the emergency management office. Um you know, that's like kind of clear and in the in in a gap. Um and it starts to lay the foundation for the multi-year initiatives that we know we're going to have to complete. This is not ideal timing, right? Like having like lots of systemic work to do at a time where we have one year left in ESSAR. We've had, you know, for decades, declining enrollment, you know, and the need to write the the system. They're all coming together. And I don't think there's anyone here that would be like, oh, this is the way it should all happen. But that is our reality. And what we have to do is try to make the best of that reality right now and the best decisions we can so that we're able to this year, next year, and the years after, support our students in our schools the best that we can. So that's what I think this budget does. It lays transition, foundation in some of the areas, continues to support the field in a way that right now, I don't think anyone would feel comfortable removing services when we see students, you know, struggling as much as they are and staff struggling as much as they are.
Thank you so much for my time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
I wasn't really ready. Um. I'm curious, the I had asked in the last round just about the vacancies on the two pieces that we're moving either to ESSAR or to the general fund. Just to clarify that, I won't get tonight, or we might be able to get this evening.
Um that's not information that we will have um this evening.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question around some of the reports that we've received to uh Mr. O'Neil's uh connection earlier. There are sort of two things, and maybe I've missed this in a at a moment, but I don't think I have. I think some of this is, there's like new news here because we have not been told which of the recommendations from the reports we're taking. And so while I'm like hopeful that there is alignment and I hear you that there is alignment, we're sort of operating blindly because we, as a body, no one has come back to us to say which of the recommendations are part of our path forward. Um I think we all have an assumption, at least I have an assumption that we will do something off of those recommendations, God willing, right? But what it is, I feel unclear. And so it is just sort of stating for myself, like it's hard for me to see that connection too, because like I don't really know on safety what it is that we're looking to do and how this would align to that. I don't know that really clearly on special education. I don't know that about transportation to the contrary. Um and so I don't know, how do you want us to be thinking about that, Superintendent, and what um either preview for the recommendations that we plan to take, what sort of the preview of recommendations that we plan to take, or just how you're also reconciling that during this time?
Or so, you know, we're working through, um you know, given that we've gotten, you know, in a staggered fashion, the reports and, you know, all uh other than the special ed report, you know, and kind of a fairly consolidated and and uh not that long ago uh timeframe, we're trying to work through them rapidly, thoughtfully, in a connected way, but also in partnership where it's appropriate with the DESI and the SIP work. Um and certainly the council as we need more and clarifying information. So there's lots of work happening on those things. I think in the budget, we're calling out the things that we are feeling need to move forward, um such as in special education, inclusion. Um how we're approaching that, uh why we're approaching it that way. And then in that, you know, I think, um for instance, uh Senior Deputy Chen has said, you know, like this was a council's recommendation where, you know, which was a big one on adopting the inclusion model um and the the great uh the great implementation. Um and then moving forward with that. I think in some of the other, you know, um recommendations that tend to be either smaller or they might not have a cost. It's more a shift or, you know, it's more, um it's it's so minimal that it's we're not calling it out in a budget this size. Um those will all come, you know, as we give uh meet with DESI and kind of do our next steps um with DESI on the reports. Um there will be something scheduled for school committee uh shortly after that. So that's when we'll actually go recommendation uh by recommendation in the reports and say, you know, this is where we're doing it. This is the timeframe or the time length. Um these are the departments that are going to be pivotal in this. So I think it's two different levels of understanding. Given the budget is so early, we're not able to rush through that process at that comprehension level um to be able to give you kind of like that level of checkoff. But I think from the budget presentations, we've been sort of clear and highlighting um the things that if you were to go back to the report, you would see are sort of mentioned in there or suggested or recommended. Um and I think there is, you know, some crosswalk there.
Yeah, like it will be easier for me probably when it's explicit because I'm I do I'm not, I don't see it in that same way, but maybe that's sort of where it's like inside baseball for you guys. You're seeing the connection and like, you know, I'm I'm just not, I'm not really sure. You know, some of the recommendations in those reports were competing recommendations. It's like you could do this or you could do that. And so it is a little, which is like the magic of many of those Council of Great City School reports. So it the sort of which of the choose your own adventure, I'm not sure which choice we've made. Uh the last question I have in my final 10 seconds is just as we are thinking about the fact that the whole harmless funding is now on ESSAR that ends in September 2024. I guess more specifically, what do you think will happen? Like, is it, we will be looking to the city for funding? Is it something in the middle? Is it is it expedited consolidations? It's not going to just come out in the wash. So it's sort of like, what do you think we should be thinking about as we vote for this budget? And think about the the next fiscal year and the difficult decisions as we all keep sort of alluding to without putting a little bit more concrete on top of it. Uh like, what is that going to be? Do you suspect?
I mean, I think it's going to be a multifaceted approach. I think there's going to need to be this some combination of new investment dollars and identifying the areas of continuation. Like inclusion is obviously going to be a multi-year, you know, investment. There might be some new ones in there, whereas my, you know, is what I suspect. There's going to clearly be some difficult choices that schools and central need to make. Um in particular areas that were previously funded by ESSAR. Uh there's going to be some hopefully efficiency that we're able to save through some acceleration once we're getting the reports on facilities and being to being able to map that out so that we know, you know, what in uh in terms of the buildings and what we might be able to uh to conserve or to save there. Um I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a number of different approach like strategies we're going to have to implement. But at the end, there are going to be hard choices that are going to have to be made at the school side and at the district side um around making sure that what we're funding aligns and supports the priorities we've laid out and addresses the recommendations that we're adopting in the various council reports and SIP.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Dr. Hawkins.
Uh thank you again. Um uh thank you to member Cardet Hernandez and member uh O'Neil uh for sort of raising what was also my question around the priorities from the reports. Um you know, I I mean, for for me, I think we s- I I I see some of it that we've um shifted to, I think, in the transportation report or a presentation that we might get to this evening.
That's scheduled for this evening.
Yeah, um I I I do think that we see some of that in terms of uh the understanding of our responsibility as a district and sort of building out um data accountability um on-time performance indicators, things like that, things that um we we certainly, I think, uh things that came out in in those reports that I think we are sort of addressing. Um so I do see some elements of it, but I think, you know, as to what we've heard earlier, I mean, I think it's also going to be that conversation, not ripping the Band-Aid off. We've been having it for a while about school mergers and uh and I think we should be paying attention very closely to, you know, the the Shaw-Taylor merger for process and understanding like what's the best way to sort of have this conversation for what will be multiple schools. Um and I don't think there's any easy way to sort of say that. But I think just naming it and just saying that we're going to do the best that we can and sort of making sure that there's an inclusive process that is in place uh for it and that there's recourse when there, when that process doesn't go as equitably as it should. Um but um I, yeah, I think, you know, we're we're, I I don't think there's any more time. Like, I I think we're we're just at that moment um where yeah, that's going to be a conversation for everybody. So.
Yes. Mr. Mayna.
Yeah, um I mean, I don't want to be talking in repetition, so uh but uh talking, talking about the equitable literacy. Um I'm just so we're going to continue to invest in it for the next year, right? But I mean, obviously, we need to continue investing it forever, really, but like oh, with the ESSAR funding gone after ne- next year, like is, are there going to be plans to be continued investing in that and as well as, I mean, I'm asking that specifically right now, but like obviously, the other important programs, right?
Yeah.
But
This is a real, this is a good question.
That right now.
Yeah. So uh Chief Cooter, do you want to explain like that shifting, why that is a great example?
Yeah, I would say two things about that, and thank you for that, the the question. The first part of that is when we make an investment and we talk about using general fund dollars to make strategic investments, like the equitable literacy investment that we're adding this year. We think of those as longer-term, sort of more sustainable dollars because they become part of our baseline budget the next year. Um so it's it's um, you know, while we do always have to sort of think about our trade-offs in any annual cycle, the reason that we've prioritized certain things on general funds is to make sure they're on a more sustainable funding source. And so as part of that work with schools, that $15 million that was highlighted in one of the earlier slides, we worked with them to identify what are they already spending their ESSAR funding on that's related to equitable literacy? And move that to the general funds as a signaling um and also a practical impact of making it more sustainable going forward. Um so so great question. I hope that that helps. When we talk about future year investment in equitable literacy, it's it's about expanding and building upon the investments we've made this year. So of the um of the investment this year that builds on what we added last year for equitable literacy. Did that, I think that addressed your question, but if I didn't, please uh let me know.
You're muted. Mr. Mayna, you're muted.
It did, it's, yeah, I realized. Um it did to an extent. Um but I have, okay, I'll just.
We, I'm happy to answer more. Don't don't feel like uh if if you, if I didn't answer your question fully, let's let's keep diving into it because I want to make sure.
You you it, you answered about that specific topic, but like, there's always going to be those concerns about every topic. So that's what I'm just. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Tron.
Um I just have a worst-case scenario type of question that that brings me back to budget uh dispute prior to 1993. Okay, there's a worst-case scenario that I raise here uh and forgive me for my ignorance, but let's just assume in the worst-case scenario, you don't have the vote to pass the budget this time around. Uh what are the alternatives? Assuming that you don't have the vote to pass the budget.
Uh three, yes. I I think actually, um I think Vice Chair um addressed this in his comments, but um Nate, could you just explain the budget that we revert back to?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. So um if you were to vote uh a no on the current budget proposal that we're submitting to you this evening, um the budget that the superintendent proposed on February 1st would be the proposal that moved forward to the city council process. Um so in effect, it would be a decrease in overall funding uh request to city council. Um you know, as you know, there are there are state laws that apply to Boston specifically um that outline this, the procedures around our budget. Um the next step in the process after you vote on our budget is that the mayor makes her proposal to the city council the second Wednesday in April. Um and so um you know, those are the sort of practical implications of a no vote um next Wednesday.
I I think I would also just add that the dollar differential is actually what's intended for all the labor contract costs. So just as a reminder to council, most of our union contracts were pretty upside down. Uh actually, all of them. Um and so we brought pretty much everything, we're moving on bringing it current. And so that is reflected in that addition. So we would not have the dollars to honor that and we would have to we would have to uh deal with that at that point.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair Robinson, if if I may, just I we um I want to thank my team who is uh great and more responsive than I anticipated. And I have an answer to Mr. Cardet Hernandez's earlier question. Um of the positions that moved from general fund to ESSAR, we're estimating about 25%. Uh 60 positions were vacant currently.
Thank you. And the ones that moved to the general fund, we I mean, I know they were racing for this, so I'm being patient, but also.
Uh I I don't have the flip side of that um yet, but we'll work on that and get that response to you before next Wednesday.
Don't worry. Thank you so much. Don't worry, thank you so much.
I know our time is late, I just have a few questions, and I do want to remind members. We have two more reports we must hear tonight. Because they are all dependent on votes that we must make. Um, in the next meeting, so it's now nine thirty, but I have a couple. Of quick questions, and then I think anything else that I have, I will. Send to you in written form, and hopefully you'll be able to get that back to us before we need to vote next week. Um, I just wanted to get one bit of clarity, we, we talked both, we talked often both about. Holding harmless and soft landings, are they synonymous? Um, in terms of, or how are they different from one another in this budget and moving forward?
Chief Kuter loves this question, go ahead, Chief Kuter.
I do love this question, it's a great opportunity to clarify, um, because we, we have used both terms a lot. Um, we have in our budget process, a number of soft landings built in, which are meant to be transition funds. Um, when schools experiencing enrollment declines or experiencing change in policy. And so a soft landing is, um, has a planned sunset. And so in our budget process, we automatically, um, create soft landings for enrollment declines. Plus or minus a certain percentage, that's an annual piece, and that was something that you'll see in our budget from several years ago. Hold harmless was the decision to not have schools adjust their budgets downward. When enrollment declined, that is a new policy that was put in place over the last two fiscal years. I mean, this was me- was meant to stabilize budgets overall. One of the big differences this year, I just want to note about hold harmless, as it relates to extra capacity in the system. Is that we haven't necessarily held schools harmless by keeping open classrooms that were unnecessary because of enrollment. Schools have closed twenty-three classrooms this year. And then the way that we held them harmless was ask them to use those dollars more strategically and aligned. But in past years, in awaited student funding district. If enrollment had declined and they had the ability to take capacity offline. That would have been a net decrease in their budget individually as a school. Um, but that's the part that we have not made schools make those adjustments, um, the last, um, few, um, budget years.
Okay. Um, concern I have is that I know we will be receiving the Green New Deal report in December. In December is also the time in which schools will have been building their budgets. And we're also talking about the fact that we're heading for a big cliff. So, how are we going to deal? With the alignment of those three critical things at a time when. Um. You know, we already know that we've got too many schools, too many classrooms, and and not enough money moving forward. So is there any ability to get to the report? On the state of all of our buildings sooner than later? So that there is some reality check as people will be building budgets next year and the reality. Of the changes that we need to be made. Um, will be taken into consideration in the preparation of budgets versus a reaction after the fact.
So I'm gonna actually ask, um, Deputy DePina that question.
Thank you, um, to Lieutenant, and, uh, thank you, uh, Chief Alvarez for jumping on as well. I know we already had a predetermined schedule for the facility condition assessment that we put in place, actually the year before last, we set it all up. And due to the RP timelines, that's the timeline and constraint that we, that the vendor was working under. But I'll defer to Chief Alvarez to add anything beyond that.
All right, um, so good evening, everyone, so we anticipate the facilities condition assessment to, uh, be completed. By the end of August, um, not, not December, so right now we're actively. Doing the work and that the vendor is due to completed by the end of August.
And then once that's complete, then we'll be able to align that with the recent information on the DLR study. To forge and 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 make the facilities priority plan, so. Timing wise, we, uh, we again aligned it with the RP that we put out prior to, and the vendor's been working through that, um, acquisition schedule that we put in place.
Okay, thank you. Um. I want to thank you all for this budget, and I know the work that has gone into it. But I think you've heard from members, um, we're all concerned, um, moving ahead, um, in terms of. What next year needs to look like and how are we preparing ourselves to this year in order to, to face those issues? Also with the number of reports, um, and the work that needs to be synthesized there. And the number of needs, um, it feels like there's a lot of information. In what you've given us, but at the same time, we don't have specifics. Or a lot of the metrics that we really need to understand moving forward, I mean, just, you know, one example is. For the families to continue to come and talk about, um, wanting dual language bilingual education. Um, bilingual opportunities for their students, have we done any kind of assessment? To understand which families would actually want their children in bilingual, bicultural programs and which would not. Um, you know, where are they, those kinds of things, so that, you know. We, we say we're investing in a certain number of them, where are those programs going to be? And how will parents have the ability to choose them? Or not, it just feels like, you know, there's a lot of promise, but not a lot of detail. And so, you know, I understand in a budget, we, we've got, we've got to lay the money out there. Because we also know that right now, we neither have the head of, the new head of special ed nor the new head. Of ELL, English Language Learners, whatever we're calling it, but you know what I'm saying? And what changes or opportunities will they want to be able to begin to implement in this next year? I don't, I don't see anywhere that we said we put a, a, you know, a pot of money aside. For adjustments to needs. As, you know, we, we bring on the next generation of staff members who will be in lead here. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, are we sinking all of our dollars into things that we want to move forward on? Um, but where, where is that opportunity for? Something else thing of those things?
Uh, three share, so, I think that this, this comes back to getting, we got a lot of information. In a very consolidated timeline. That is not, you know, any one of those reports would be what a typical district would be dealing with. We're dealing with all of them, plus the strategic plan for OME, plus the data report, plus the Green New Deal. There is a lot of information, and I think the teams are working as quickly as we can to be thoughtful as we assess it. But we don't, we can't do it in isolation, it requires us continuing to work with DEFI. Continuing to work with the Council of Great City Schools and other relevant parts. I think the OME is a good example, where there is a strategic plan. And I think that what, um, you know, Deputy Chen and her team have done. Is to lay out, you know, based also on feedback, important feedback, um, from the LL task force. Um, and certainly from our public comment, to say here are steps that we can take in the first year. That no matter who the OME director is or chief come, that comes in. This is going to be the direction we need to go in order to make a commitment a whole. For increasing bilingual education opportunities and expanding access to native language. I think you're right that the match of survey, that's something that I know Dr. Chen and her team are working toward. To be able to not only survey the families, but this is also the dialogue with the schools and the school leaders and communities. So that is part of the planning grant and planning process, um, that she laid out in her budget, as is just like one example. I think when you look at special ed and inclusion, there's examples there as well. Um, I think where you'll see things come into more of a, uh, you know, a, a far sightedness. Um, where you can actually see it closely, um, is, I, I think you'll see that actually much more so. After we're able to present to you, you know, later spring, um, you know, specifically. The three to five year plan relative to the reports, you'll be able to see clearly how we back mapped into this budget. But more clearly how going forward, what the priority areas are going to be for the next several years. Um, so in many ways, it helps us. It, to do the kind of deep planning we need to do for those reports, because it also makes clear what the budget priorities in the next couple of years are gonna need to be. Um, so unfortunately, we're just in the space right now where. It's, we're trying to synthesize as quick, as quickly as we can. With the partners that we have to work with, um, and at the same time, try to complete a budget process. That is as thoughtful as possible and is starting to signal with the field and for us. Um, an ability to be able to approach, you know, and come down off of a cliff. Um, so, I know that doesn't answer all of your questions, but. I think that that's just the reality of sort of where we are as an organization, um, and what this budget reflects.
Okay, thank you, um, the only other thing I want to say right now is I want to say thank you, I heard. In the report that you have invested in nine restorative justice counselors. Is that one per region, is that why you've come to?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, and I just.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I'd like to underscore that, I know that, um, Dr. DePina did it as part of his report, but. Uh, there's no, there's zero dollars in this budget for, uh, connecting, uh. The co- community connection positions that were, uh, originally talked about, um, early on. Uh, there are, there is funding for the nine restorative practice. Um, coaches for those regions as a way to deepen that work in the schools, and that comes also from direct feedback. From school leaders as to the kind of supports that they believe that they need in their schools. And a PD that they want to see, um, that, that was like a good example of, um, being able to reorient to the needs.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm hoping at a future meeting, we'll be able to have a report to understand a little bit more about. What is gonna be happening in the nine regions, I, I know you introduced everybody, the leaders tonight. But we've talked, there've been a lot of things within the budget that we've talked about that are going to be in the, the regional work, so it would be great. To get a, um, a full report on how that's gonna play out.
Yeah, I think that'll be a fun meeting, um, for everybody, everybody to be able to hear that, to hear our school, the voice of our school troops.
You know. Alrighty, thank you, I know people may have more questions, but again, it's nine forty-five, and if people are willing. To put in writing the rest of the questions they have, um, I really would like to be able to, to move on, so we are not sitting here at one AM. So, um, thank you again, if there's nothing more, I'll now entertain a motion, oh, sorry, reading them on the script. Thank you, Mr. Kuter, and thanks to the entire team for your tireless work. On the budget, and, um, we will look forward to taking up action on the revised. Disco twenty-four budget proposal next Wednesday and our March twenty-second meeting. Okay, we'll now move on to our next report, the transportation vendor contract. For yellow buses, I'll now invite Executive Director of Transportation, Dan Rosengard to give the presentation. But first, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair, um, and thank you to the committee, uh, for consideration of this. You know, tonight, we're gonna present, um, our vendor contract for the yellow bus transportation services. Over the past few years, under the leadership of Dell and Aslats, we all know Dell. Um, and now certainly under the capable leadership of Dan Rosengard. We've made steady progress with transportation services. Um, there's still a great deal of work to do, as was evidenced. At a consecrated the schools report and by our, by our own account. Um, you know, in order to better serve our students, BPS transportation requires systemic change. Um, our system is very complex, and that's been noted by the council, it's been noted by the consultants that worked with us. Um, and it's gonna require years of consistent progress with gains each year to get us where we need to be. The Council of Great City Schools report, um, outlines several critical recommendations. That require two cross departmental, cross agency, us, charters. Uh, parochial schools and city collaboration, as well as really robust community engagement. The five-year vendor contract proposed tonight is a critical part of the consistent. And comprehensive pro- process, um, that, you know, we believe is required. Um, and, you know, we believe, um, provides us, uh, in the contract, the time to assess our needs. Implement changes, um, continue to build on the improvements we're seeing. Um, you know, that is what is presented in this five-year contract. Um, it's been entirely restructured, um, and it focuses really on vendor accountability. And it's tied to financial incentives that are based on outcomes for students. Contract reflects the comprehensive pro- process that began two years ago, uh, almost two years ago. Um, and it included input and guidance from external consultants. With deep industry experience nationally, who looks specifically at BPS. Our needs and context, and made recommendations for how to build the strongest possible invitation for bids. Since awarding the contract, we've met and engaged in Inspector General's office. Over a period of multiple months, and further strengthened the contract with their guidance and recommendations. Yesterday, I received a letter from Transdev affirming their commitment, the pursuit of continuous improvements. Under this new contract, as well as taking on the financial risk associated with non-performance. I want to thank Transdev for their commitment to continuously make improvements. For our students and also for working with our transportation team and negotiate this new contract that builds on the progress we've made. And I really want to compliment Dan and the transportation staff for their diligence and their hard work. Um, they've really been at this to try to make this contract, the, the, you know, the change agent that we believe it needs to be. So that we have safe, reliable transportation for all of our students every day. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan Rosengard, our Director of Transportation.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Just pulling up the slides real quick. All right. Uh, thank you, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, to present to the school committee a new five-year transportation vendor contract to begin on July first, twenty twenty-three. I'm joined tonight by Jackie Hayes, the BPS Transportation Assistant Director of Contract Operations and Fleet. And Michael Miller, Director of Strategic Procurement for the City of Boston. Both of whom have been integral to the development of this contract. BPS transports nearly twenty-two thousand students on a daily basis across two hundred and twenty-five schools. Each of these students requires safe, reliable, on-time transportation to deliver them to and from school. The work to transport our students is completed in close partnership with our bus vendor. Our vendor manages maintenance of our buses, management of all yard and bus operations. Hiring, training, and management of bus drivers and bus safety personnel deployments. These elements are all contained within the vendor contract being presented tonight. At the same time, and separate from this contract, the district also manages bus routing. Hiring, training, and management of bus monitors, distribution of MBTA passes. And customer service for our students, families, and schools. To make the necessary improvements to provide our students with the transportation they deserve. Will require years of daily incremental progress. Across all as, all aspects of this complex operation. Including those that are under the vendor, as well as those that BPS manages. The vendor contract proposed tonight is one critical lever. For making the progress that we know we need to improve transportation services. The contract is entirely restructured from the current contract to establish a newly structured relationship. Between BPS and the yellow bus contractor. It's laser focused on vendor accountability. Tied to student-centered outcomes to ensure that an incoming vendor has a significant financial interest. In improving and maintaining strong performance. I would now like to hand off to our Assistant Director of Contract Operations and Fleet, Jackie Hayes. To provide a deep dive into some of the key changes made in this contract.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight to speak on this topic. As we all know, the yellow bus vendor contract is a key lever to help improve transportation outcomes for students and families. I'd like to highlight a couple of the critical structural changes in this contract. That will help ensure better outcomes for students and families. First. This contract creates real financial incentives for good performance and cost savings. Second, the contract shifts more financial liability from BPS to the contractor. Third, this contract has penalties for poor performance in the form of meaningful, meaningful focused damages. Fourth, this contract updates the scope and scale of services we have sought to accurately reflect the mission of the transportation department. to accurately reflect the mission of the Transportation Department. Finally, this contract supports a shift to fleet electrification in line with district goals. I'd like to go into greater depth on a couple of these topics. First, throughout this new contract, there are examples of a shift in liability from the district to the vendor. The purpose of this shift is to help ensure that the vendor shares in the outcome for both good and poor performance. The purpose of this change is to codify the expectation that any vendor working with the, within Boston Public Schools has skin in the game and tangible reasons to strive to deliver excellent service. One example that is perhaps simple but consequential is shifting financial responsibility for facility costs such as utilities, maintenance, and snow removal to the vendor. These costs used to pass through dollar-for-dollar to the district or currently pass through dollar-for-dollar to the district. Under the new contract, the vendor is financially incentivized to manage their facilities efficiently and effectively to manage these costs. The second major set of changes that I'd like to highlight is the incentive structure for good performance laid out in this contract. The incentives in the new IFB are designed to be focused on outcomes for students, in particular, on-time performance. The incentives in this contract are achievable to ensure the vendor is properly motivated throughout the life of the contract. And finally, they are also tiered to motivate continuous improvement each day. To give an example, there is an incentive for achieving over eighty-five percent on-time performance in the first ten days of school, as well as an additional incentive for achieving over ninety percent during the same period. Achieving either of these incentives would represent significant improvement over current performance. But we believe they are achievable goals and achievable during the five-year term of the contract based on cumulative trends and in performance outcomes that we have seen so far. Each incentive represents improvements compared to our baseline in recent years. But we also believe these goals are achievable based on recent improvements that we have seen. By clearly articulating our priorities to the vendor, the district will be able to demand accountability from the vendor for our shared goals. Ultimately, this document is designed to fully commit the vendor to focus on our mission, safe, reliable, and on-time student transportation. Finally, I would like to address the question of a five-year contract, which we know is a question that has been raised by different school committee members and members of the public in recent weeks. The most consequential reason that we have gone with a five-year contract is because this term provides the district stability and the time needed to focus on the many necessary improvements that fall outside of the yellow best bit, bus vendor contract. For example, the many improvements highlighted in the Council for Great City Schools reports. Also of importance in coming to this decision was looking at the planning timelines for IFB development. It takes approximately two to three years to develop bid specifications, complete the bid process, and transition the vendor into operation. We want to make sure that any future contract is informed by data and insights that we will gain over the next two years of implementation. Finally, our consultants made the recommendation for a five-year term in part based on the reality that a term shorter than five years was unlikely to attract bidders, given the complexity and challenges of operating in the Boston environment. The next two slides give a brief overview of the work process to develop this contract. The first slide shows key dates to bid out the contracts that have already been completed. The second slide shows an outline of process elements, research, analysis, and engagement, all which were necessary to fully inform the contract structure that we are presenting here tonight. The invitation for bids was developed over a nearly two-year process in collaboration with two consulting firms with deep industry experience. The process began in the summer of 2021, beginning with a review of BPS transportation's needs and operations. The development of the IFB was informed by a review of peer districts, interviews with the four largest vendors in the school transportation industry, and consultation with BPS families, transportation department employees, and other BPS stakeholders. The entire process was overseen by a cross-department and cross-city steering committee, including senior leadership from BPS Operations, BPS Finance, BPS Business Services, and City Procurement. The resulting contract represents what we believe is the best possible approach to ensuring that a vendor is incentivized and positioned to provide safe, reliable, and on-time transportation services for BPS students and the students of the City of Boston. My colleague Mike will now speak to the vendor response we received in the bid process.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, so again, I, I, having been a piece of the actual steering committee on this, uh, one of the things that really struck me was that this contract was the result of really an intense, focused, multi-year effort, including an incredible amount of market analysis and research. Um, and so our consultant analysis, early on in the process, showed that there were really only three or four vendors in North America that were large enough and sophisticated enough to be able to operate in this environment. Um, and so all four of these vendors, uh, as we went throughout the process, were interviewed and we talked with them. Um, and so all four of them were very familiar with that, the same BPS operating environment. Now, when interviewed, they really did express concerns over that complexity. And this is something that I think we all know and have talked about, but some of, also had expressed some into, some concerns about the new contract itself, uh, and the performance incentives and the potential impact that that would have on their financial bottom line. Uh, all four of those vendors actually did engage in that bid process, either with visits to the yard or questions back and forth. And so as a piece of this, they, they were there and discussed and asked questions. Ultimately, only one vendor did submit a bid, and that was TransDev. So it was important to remember that this isn't just about getting a bidder. It was also a vendor and a bidder that was going to accept the contract on BPS's terms, especially focused around including the financial accountability that was tied to those student outcomes. Some of the other vendors that participated in the IFB process indicated that the contract risks were bluntly too great and that they for, and they decided ultimately not to bid. Now, oh, sorry, uh, by way of introduction, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Miller. I'm the Director of Strategic Procurement for the City of Boston, and so I've been a piece, sorry about that. Uh, I'd been a piece in this process, working with this team over the last two years to try and uh, make sure that this was something that they would be successful and provide them every possible support that we could along the way. So apologies. Um, in the end, with TransDev's bid, we, we, we got that. Now, as a part of the, the research and analysis, we started to try and project what we were going to be getting in terms of what the potential price might be. And the consultants anticipated that it might be coming in somewhere between seventeen and a half million and twenty-two point six million. Now, TransDev's bid orig- finally came in at seventeen points, at seventeen point four nine seven million. Now, it's important to remember that this includes, very specifically, a reduction in some of the pass-through costs. So again, some of the things that, as Jackie had mentioned earlier, would originally flow through dollar-for-dollar to BPS instead are now incorporated in that seventeen point five million, or in that seventeen point five million. What this ends up meaning is that there's a lot more tied into this and it pulls in together and puts them financially on the hook for actually ensuring that they're efficient and effective in terms of how they're going to be going about managing that money. So, again, this IFB really was the product of years of work and focus, looking at not just how to procure it, but also making sure that we were building the most effective contract that would allow us to manage that contract to derive this kind of student outcomes. Um, and so just again, the contract management of this is an incredible thing, and the tools have been built into it to allow the team to do some really, really amazing work. So, uh, I would like to pass it back to Dan to close this out.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Jackie. So in closing, I would just like to speak briefly to our partnership with TransDev. Although we know that our service is not yet where it needs to be, TransDev has demonstrated a true commitment to improvements in recent years. In fall of 2020, BPS instituted a monthly performance review process with the vendor to review and monitor performance on an ongoing basis. This process began with comprehensive audits across six TransDev functional areas and identification of action plans for improvements in each of those areas. Through the implementation of this monthly review process and those improvements over the last two years, and I should note that the monthly performance review process is now codified into the new contract, we have seen notable improvements in performance across TransDev's operations. I'll just quickly highlight one or two examples that we've seen in recent years. So first, coming out of the pandemic, school districts nationwide were faced with a, a severe bus driver shortage. And we saw the impacts of that, very, you know, real impacts on students last year. In response to this, TransDev implemented a brand-new paid CDL training program that allowed them to hire and train not previously credentialed drivers. Since last May, TransDev has hired and trained more than a hundred and fifty new drivers, including ninety-two drivers that were provided with paid CDL training, allowing us to mitigate the impact of the bus driver shortage. A second example is yard operations, where TransDev has worked hard to streamline communications both across each of the busyards and with BPS, uh, staff, as well as to, uh, consistently reach ninety-five percent of buses leaving the busyard on time each morning. And, and I'll actually, I'll say that, uh, we really saw the impact of both of these, um, you know, efforts in action yesterday with, with the, the storm. So despite the weather and the storm yesterday, we had all of our bus routes covered with drivers in both the morning and afternoon. And before accounting for any missing GPS data, we achieved ninety-four percent on-time performance yesterday morning. And so I think that really is a testament to the work done and the improvements made over the last two years. Now with their bid, TransDev has really committed to continued improvements as well as taking on the financial risk associated with non-performance under this new contract. Over the past few months, we've worked incredibly closely with TransDev to finalize and get to an agreed-upon contract and prepare for a smooth and successful implementation. BPS Transportation is committed to implementing this contract to ensure vendor accountability for improved performance. Our mission, our, our very real mission every single day is to provide the students of Boston with safe, reliable, on-time transportation. And this contract represents a critical step towards that goal. And with that, thank you. I'll pass it back to the superintendent, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dan, Chair. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosengard and team, and, um, for all of your work on this important contract. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Gracias por la presentación de esta noche. Gracias, Madam Chair. Eh, el problema, el problema del transporte ha sido un caos constante para las familias aquí en Boston.
We're not hearing the interpretation. We're not hearing the interpretation.
Erica?
Yeah.
I don't know what happened.
She there?
Can somebody confirm if, if the interpreter, interpreter is still there?
It's Randolph, just saying. And it's. Anna, can you help us?
I can assist, um, I would just ask if. Licenciada Polanco Garcia, usted quiere que yo le apoye?
Sí, sí, gracias, muy amable.
Puedes repetir lo que digo?
I'm here, por favor.
Are you there? Okay.
Muy bien.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I'm here. I was having some technical difficulties.
Okay. Ah, estaba primeramente dandole las gracias al equipo que trabajó en todo lo que ha sido el proceso de, del, de, del que la contratación de trans- para transportación.
Uh, first and foremost, thanks to everyone, um, that has been here in the transportation team.
Eh, el que queremos, la familia lo que quieren ver en la transportación es que estén a tiempo, que sea responsable y que sea seguro.
What families want to see is that transportation is on time and that is safe.
Responsable y seguro.
Responsible and safe.
Entonces, nosotros hemos tenido desde hace mucho tiempo muchos problemas, muchas quejas con la transportación.
And we have had, um, many, many problems in the past with the transportation.
Y quiero llevar a su mente quién ha sido la compañía que ha estado contratado por todo este tiempo.
And I would like to bring up, um, I would like to bring up which has been the company that has been contracted for many years.
En ese sentido tengo dos preguntas.
In that sense, I have two questions.
La primera pregunta es, ¿por qué quiero que la comunidad, los padres, los estudiantes puedan escuchar de ustedes? ¿Por qué estas cuatro, de las cuatro compañías que aplicaron? ¿Qué pasó? Que tres se retiraron y solo quedó transfer.
And I would like to know why of four companies that answered to the bid, three of them withdrew, and only, um, this company transferred state.
Thank you for that question. Um, so yes, as, as we noted, there are, there are four companies within the vendor market that we believe and that our consultants identified as sufficiently resourced and sophisticated and large enough to take on the BPS transportation operation. We engaged with all of these companies throughout the bid process. All four of those companies, um, attended our initial conference call and attended the yard walkthroughs that we held to, to help bidders, um, you know, during the bid process. Ultimately, what we heard from, from bidders was that the financial risks, specifically the, the vendor accountability associated with this contract was, um, something that presented, you know, a risk or, um, too much of a risk or, you know, disincentivized some of the, the other vendors from bidding. Uh, we heard this from a number of them, and one of those vendors actually sent us a, a letter letting us know that the reason that they did not bid was that the, the risks were too great and the benefits too few. And so that is ultimately what we heard, but what we knew was that most, what was most important to us was having a contract that puts students first and that really drives student outcomes. And so it was incredibly important to us to include those performance incentives and those uh, liquidated damages associated with non-performance to make sure that we're incentivizing and driving the improvements that our students need. And so what TransDev ultimately told us with their bid and with the letter that they sent to the superintendent yesterday is that they are committed to taking on the contract on our terms, including the risk associated with it, to ensure that they're providing our students the transportation they need.
Gracias, eh, por la, por la, por la respuesta. Y qué creen ustedes después del estudio que ustedes han hecho y tomando en cuenta todas las adversidades que ha habido con la transportación, que esta compañía verdaderamente lo va a hacer mejor.
So with all the things that have, that has happened, um, what do you think that, what makes you think that this company is now going to do, it's going to perform better?
Thank you. So I, I think the first thing I want to come back to and note is something that the Council of Great City Schools called out in their report, which is that we have an incredibly complex school bus transportation, very possibly one of the most, if not the most, complex in the nation. And there are so many different factors impacting that. And the, the vendor contract is a very important piece, but it's just one piece of that. We also have, you know, we know that we have 24 different bell times in the morning. We have, you know, school assignment policies and special education needs that, you know, make transportation more challenging. We have a number of different, you know, union contracts and, you know, unions that we engage with. And each of those impacts transportation. And the vendor contract that we're talking about tonight is just one piece of that. And so I think one thing I just want to note is we need to address all of the pieces of that to really drive the improvements we need. Now, the second thing I would note is, you know, really specific to the question you asked is we have seen over the past two years through the monthly performance review process that we put in place, a commitment to improvement from TransDev. And I think we've, we've started to see benefits and impacts of that on the ground. And they have reaffirmed their commitment to continuing to do that. And so we, you know, we have put out a contract that requires them to put their money where their mouth is, but they have shown us and told us that they are, you know, willing to take on that challenge and that they believe they can continue to improve and hit the performance targets that we've set.
Muchas gracias. Se me acabó mi tiempo, pero una última cosita.
Thank you very much. My time is over, but I just want to say something.
Dos es establecer el contrato que cuando el autobús no llegue, que los padres tengan que pagar un transporte como un Uber o un Lyft. Si pudieron ustedes establecer en el contrato que la responsabilidad iba a ser para transfer, no? Que transfer debía pagar esto para los padres. ¿Se pudo establecer?
So I would like to know if in the contract it was established that when the bus is late and the parent needs to pay Uber or Lyft, that that would be the responsibility of transfer, that transfer needs to pay for this?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. So we do have, not within this contract, but we do have a process in place for students with specialized transportation within their IEP. If they have any disruption in their transportation service, then they can submit for reimbursement for either transporting their students to and from school, you know, by driving them, or if they sent them in a taxi or a ride share like an Uber or Lyft. So families can get that reimbursement, you know, and that's, that's through the district. And one thing I would, I would also note there is just kind of coming back to what is within the contract and what is not. BPS is responsible for the hiring, training, and operations of bus monitors. And we know that bus monitor shortages are probably the, the biggest thing impacting our special education students and their access to transportation right now. And so that's something that the district has taken on and that we are very, very committed to hiring and training bus monitors to, to mitigate that shortage while in the meantime making sure that we provide reimbursement for families as well as other, you know, systems and processes to make sure the students are able to get to and from school.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. O'Neil and then Mr. Cardette Hernandez added stand up. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the, in the interest of time, since it's late, I'm going to try to keep my comment short and I have two quick questions. First of all, thank you for the team to working on this. This is a huge contract. This is a very important deal. Obviously, we all share frustration over transportation. I know a number of different ways have been looked at the past few years about, do we move this in-house? Can we provide vans? Can we provide vouchers to charter schools to do transportation themselves? I know we've looked at a range of ways to doing that and there are pros and cons to each. I'm deeply appreciative in particular of the city involvement in this because at this larger contract, you know, procurement is tough. I appreciate that we have built in fiscal, more fiscal controls and that TransDev, you know, will have skin in the game, so to speak. I think that is really important. That is something that has sadly lacked in the past and has led to enormous frustration by the committee, by the district, and so on and so forth. My questions are this. One, do we believe we are at the point with our data to actually have real data that we can use to enforce the provisions that are in this, either paying TransDev more or having a penalty back from them? Because that's reliant upon data and I don't think we're at a point yet of believing in our data. So could you address the data question number one? And I'll give you both questions upfront. The second is deeply appreciative, Superintendent, of you talking about working with the Inspector General's office. Read that letter seriously, took his, that office's sense very seriously. Deeply appreciated that you said there have been a number of meetings with them and they have been, you know, made recommendations that resulted in changes and improvements in this contract. Could you shed a bit more light on that as well, please, of how has this contract been strengthened? Because I did read the follow-on letter from the Inspector General's office as well and where some additional recommendations were made. So first about data and then second about how the involvement of the Inspector General's office has changed your sense about this contract.
Yes, no, thank you for both of those questions, Mr. O'Neil. Starting with the question about data, I think that this is an area where we have really, really been laser-focused over the last few months. Definitely, the EY data audit highlighted, you know, real challenges. And even before that, you know, we, when we were reporting on-time performance information to DESI earlier this fall, identified, you know, one of these big data gaps in terms of missing GPS data and, you know, reported that. And since that time have, have spent a really significant amount of time better understanding the data that we have, how we collect that, addressing data capture issues and, you know, setting ourselves up to make sure that we have the data we need. Because to your point, we know that we need to have accurate and comprehensive data to administer this contract. The two things I would say is we are continuing to push forward that work. I think we've made real progress over the last five or six months and we're going to continue to push that forward. You know, not just with our data, but also looking at how can we improve the technology on our buses? Whether that's, you know, figuring out how to get tablets on buses as quickly as possible or, you know, looking at the, the software and technology that we use for, for routing, for capturing, you know, bus GPS data. And so we're, you know, we're looking at kind of all options on the table to make sure that, that we're doing all we can to utilize data and technology. The other thing I would highlight is within the, the contract, the final, you know, negotiations to finalize the contract with TransDev, we, you know, talked about this GPS data issue and TransDev took on financial responsibility for for resolving that issue over time. And so over the first few years of the contract, financial responsibility for, for resolving all missing GPS data shifts to TransDev. And so they've, they've also made that commitment to say, you know, they are resolving to, to fix the issue as well. And then to your, to your second question about the Inspector General's work and, you know, some of the, the changes and improvements that, that their work led to, I want to actually hand off to our Assistant Director, Jackie Hayes.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for your question about the Inspector General's office. I, I think this is a really, has been a really important process for this contract, which is such a large and critical process for the city of, large and critical contract for the city of Boston. The, the Inspector General's review of this contract and the process that led to it has been really helpful. The, the process was robust. It included hundreds and hundreds of documents. It included years of, years of information, interviews. It was, it was very robust. And coming out of it, I think that it's really helpful to have the, the recommendations that they did give us to help us ensure that we, you know, what I'll say is it's one thing to put a new contract out. It's another thing to actually get the benefits that, from that contract. And that really requires change management and the structures being in place to ensure that the change that you put in that contract become a reality on the street. And that is where I think that the expertise for the IG, from the IGO has really been incredibly helpful. One of the initial recommendations was that we move with an integrated contract. So we have completed that work and have a signed document at this point. The next big piece of work that we're going to be completing over the coming weeks is the written contract administration plan that will go with the document and be a living document that walks hand in hand with the contract. And that will really be focused on, on, on what the Department of Transportation and the district and the city can do to help ensure that we get the value that we must get, the performance we must have out of this contract. And that was one of the recommendations for the Inspector General's office, that we needed to make sure that the process we build is not only robust but also resilient because this contract will last for multiple years and we need to document how we are successful so that we continue to be successful year after year.
I would also, I would also add that it was actually one of the recommendations on the missing GPS data and that transfer and responsibility came as a recommendation from our meetings with IGO. And I would applaud that it was extremely thorough to Jackie's point. Excuse me, extremely thorough to Jackie's point and actually visited the bus yards with us. So, you know, we, we went out and looked at, and I think that that was an important conversation to understand the operation, to understand why we chose to go one way and not the other, single yard versus three yards. And to be able to sort of see the operation live. And, you know, certainly they didn't have to do that, but they did. And I think that that, you know, that it also signals our intent as well to continuously improve our process and to make sure that this contract is impactful as possible.
Thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Yeah, I have a question. I have three questions. Given, and thank you for the presentation. Given that we are going to go down a journey of rightsizing the system, which means we will inevitably have less routes because there will be less schools. Some people are even saying up to 16 less schools. Does it not make sense to make this less than a five-year contract? More specifically, like buy us some time until we have a better understanding of our needs come August? So that we're building sort of a more appropriate relationship. I suspect we will need significantly less routes once we move through this process of mergers and consolidations.
I can start and then Superintendent, if there's anything?
Owen, yep.
Yep. So I, I think we, this was a question that we thought long and hard about while developing the contract. We, you know, we considered all of the different options and ultimately, you know, as, as we talked a little bit about in the presentation, we decided that a five-year contract made the most sense, partly because we, we knew that we were putting out something very new to the market. You know, these financial incentives and accountability is something very new. And pairing those with a three-year or shorter contract was unlikely to attract bidders. So that was one piece of it. The other is just kind of speaking to kind of the point you're making and understanding that there are broader systemic changes that are needed within transportation as well as looking at other, you know, district policies that may impact transportation. Having a five-year contract provides us the stability we need to really tackle some of those other challenges without, you know, without needing to be focused on this at the same time. So it allows us to, to stay focused over the next few years. And then Superintendent, I had a few.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I think it's, I, I applaud like the direction of the question. You know, I think on the surface like that would, that could be true, but I also think there's from the systemic change part, there's things we just don't know yet, right? Like bilingual programming, access to native language, increased access. Like we don't know what that will do as far as our students and like where our students need to get to, to do that. You know, there are other influences on the ecosystem for us besides just BPS. And so that gets into the charters and the parochials and trends that we're seeing there that could grow or could change. Special education inclusion. I think there's going to be a lot of, what we ultimately need is a partner that's going to be able to work with us to like in a fluid way as changes happen so that we can maximize and ensure that reliability of transportation. So I think that's what, you know, speaks to the, you know, the, the five-year contract. And those changes, those systemic changes are going to take multiple years to get to.
Okay. But do we contract for a number of routes? Like is that part of the, the way that they're, the management structure is set up?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So the, this contract is, you know, based on services for an estimated 620 daily routes. And, you know, within procurement law for IFBs, there is some, some flexibility if we need to go up or down.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I think it speaks to the point that the chair was making on another issue earlier, just it's so hard to be making what feels like big, long-term decisions when there's so much sort of unknown in the air. I have one more question. I guess it's more about the sort of, is it sort of two things? Like what if it doesn't work? You know, like I think we're all invested in improved performance and seeing families able to access reliable service. You know, like I'm a kid, I'm a parent whose kid gets busing and I don't trust the system enough to use it. It's not reliable enough for us as working parents. And so it's just, doesn't make sense in our lives. It's too many. I have to cancel my next meeting in order to, to deal with sort of the fallout of, of a late bus. And I'm so sort of curious, like what if it doesn't work? Sort of what happens next? How do we evaluate that? Yes, there are the, the financial consequences, but I'm really just thinking system-wide. And I think I go to that because I've sat here for a little bit over a year now and I often hear that we're so complex. And I, I appreciate that sort of exceptionalism, but some of that is like we make it complex, like we design the system. And so like we own the buses. I've said this when we could lease them. I'm not saying that is necessarily the strategy, but like, you know, we outsource management when maybe we don't need to, you know. We don't mandate start times and yeah, we're often talking about that as, you know, this sort of major issue that we have some control over, at least the internal start times, you know. We bus kids around the city into segregated strands, special education students that when we could force schools to ensure that they had the right supports to support kids locally in a more sort of geographically smart way. So like some of the complexity, like I feel is just like we've, where we make it, no one handed it to us in this sort of way. And like, what are we doing to change it so we can have a much more simple system? But then I'm also just sort of like open to the idea that like this may not work. It hasn't worked before. And so like, I think it's fair to sort of wonder what if it doesn't work? And then what are we willing to change as a system in order to make busing work that's not rooted in this one relationship?
So I guess, I guess there's a lot of different things I would answer in this way. You know, I think first of all, we've been able to see a change working really continuously over the last two years. I say that not having been here, but having looked at the data where we do see marked improvement, right? Like we are moving all in the right direction. Like, we are moving all in the right direction. I think the the part that we all live with in BPS is this legacy that we check off the technical solutions. And then we get to a certain point that's really about like deeper change and adaptive change. And that's where it kind of stops. And as a result, we don't get to the thresholds we're looking for. I think that bringing in the council great city schools as an example, bringing in the consultants as an example, give a reality check of the type of deep work that has to be done if we're going to get to the thresholds we're looking for, which industry-wise, that ninety-five percent is very high. Right? Like, when when we sort of have been peeling back within the council of that. Now, for us, we want it to be a hundred percent. But my point is that when we look at other transportation systems in other districts, that ninety-five percent is a high bar. We want, we expect and want to get to it, but we've been moving in that direction. But to get to that, we have to do some of this deep change. So and it's tied like to your point in inclusion, which is in special ed, right? Or it might be in bilingual education, you know, MME. And so this is what I think the difficulty is to have all of these thick reports and feedback and recommendations. There's no other way for us to do this but to do it that way and look at them and work on them together across departments at the same time. That's how we're going to be able to to actually kind of get at the 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 systems change that's going to allow transportation to move over that that kind of like little hurdle incremental change and growth. And I think, you know, we will be, we are looking so closely at the data, both with SIP, what we're required to report, but even more than that. I mean, the level of data that Dan and and Jackie and Transportation Department and Dell previously have gone to is so much deeper than it ever been looked, you know, to that I, you know, we're going to be reporting out on a regular basis. We're going to be able to see pretty quickly if we're not making the change, the level of change that we need to to get to the results. I also think that we haven't had a contract that's actually forced the issue from the vendor side. So although that's one part of it, it really does kind of force that the vendor is equally accountable to us, right, and with us. So we're all working now in the same direction for this level of of change and outcome. And I think, you know, we're, we'll know, you know, within two years from the data, which direction it's going to or whether it kind of hits the cliff. We'll know that and then we'll have to, as a committee, you know, go forward and make some decisions about that. But right now, we have the steps laid out by council, having, you know, advised other districts with similar kinds of issues than us in transportation, what approach to take, and and that's what we're doing.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I know, and I hope it doesn't come off that I think there's some simple solution.
Oh, no. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I I just. Yeah, I think I said it. I I will also just say, I know we keep sort of touting this data, but I think if you ask folks on the ground, it doesn't feel like it's ninety-five percent. And so like, I'm not sure what the disconnect is with the data that we say publicly and the experience that people are having and share. And some of that might be historical, but I don't know. I think you talk to, I I've spoken to enough parents as well as school leaders who it doesn't feel like it's a ninety-five percent reliability.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's not ninety-five. I wasn't meaning to imply we're we're not there. However, the data's been moving in the right direction. And even the inaccurate GPS data, you know, has now, we're like reducing that, reducing that. So it is, the indicators are all moving positively. To just give you a sense, like, the weather issues that we had yesterday, right? Like, our OTP was really high. And it, and anyone that drove into the city yesterday had a markedly different experience because there was very little traffic. And so we don't talk about it often, you know, we kind of say cursory, but there is something to be said about, you know, the the ecosystem of traffic that we live in within the city. And that's, you know, the impact of that on any of us or on our transportation. So, you know, I think it's, it's one of these things we need to work in partnership with the city as well. It's probably good for us to look at the patterns Monday through Friday. What are we seeing? What do those traffic patterns tell us? Can they help inform our routes to go different ways? I think this is really just like, also like partnering at the city level, which is why having might be a part of all of this has been, you know, so so great. But, you know, it's going to take all of us to kind of solve this solution, including TransDev with this contract as well.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Hawkins.
No question, just really a comment. I I I was certainly struck by just sort of the the fizzling out. I know I don't think it's any any fault of the district, so to speak, but I, you know, I would like to see us pick back up conversations with Lyft if possible, to to really think about like the alternatives that are there. I mean, because I think history has sort of told us that, you know, we're waiting for the other shoe to drop sort of with this conversation on transportation to some degree. But I I I have to say that, you know, I have I've appreciated where we've gone with the contract in terms of vendor responsibility. But I think we're still in that space where as a committee, we should be looking at newer and, I don't, I don't want to say radical, but like, you know, very newer ways in which we can look at a problem that can offer us those alternative solutions when needed. So I'd like to see that relationship and that partnership come back.
Fully, fully agree. And I know that Attorney Mackey is still working on that actively.
Any other comments? Just want to say that I just have one question, you know. I understand about five years, why we would need a five-year contract, but I'm also thinking that over those five years, we're hoping that in transportation will improve, but we also will hope to see needed changes happening in the district at that time, too, in terms of coming together to understand, you know, how are we doing full inclusion, all of those kinds of things? And so that after five years, the next contract after this one should be a significantly different one reflecting all of those changes that we've made. But it also, I don't, you know, I know we're, we're, we are busting approximately twenty-four thousand kids a day. So five percent of that is still twelve hundred kids getting to school somewhere late. So I'm sure on the ground, if you're one of those thousand kids or families with those thousand kids, it doesn't, ninety-five percent doesn't make any difference to you if you're part of the five percent.
That's right.
And so, you know, so hopefully, you know, as we both right-size the district and deal with some of the things that we we've talked about, eighty-nine different start times, things like that, that we have to work with our partners to come up with a plan so that we can get ninety-nine percent of our kids in all of the various times, you know, to school on time. So thank you all for this, and we look forward to taking action on this proposal next week at our meeting. So our final report this evening is Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Program Statement of Interest for the Shaw and Taylor School Communities. Before I turn it over to the Chief of Planning, Capital Planning, Delavere and Stanislaus for the presentation, I'd like to invite our superintendent to give opening remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. So our final presentation tonight will be our statement of interest, our SOI to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, better known as the MSBA. One of, one of my, one of my priority missions, I know, is a mission of Mayor Wu, is to do all that we can to provide our students with buildings to help them to learn and to thrive as we move forward in our district. The MSBA provides us a unique opportunity to submit a school for either a specific project or for a new core building, and that happens on a annual basis. Tonight, our Chief of Capital Planning, Del Stanislaus, will be presenting our proposal for MSBA for a new building for the Shaw and Taylor Schools. The application is due in mid-April. There's a cycle to MSBA and a timeline, and it requires city council approval. So we're bringing it to you before that, before the proposed merger vote because of that timeline. But should that merger happen, we want to make sure that we can begin the process to get the Shaw and Taylor School a new building. Before I turn it over to Dell, I also just want to thank Jack McCarthy and the MSBA team publicly. They took a great deal of time over the last couple of weeks to come out and to meet and with facilities and to meet with our Green New Deal team to really thoroughly explain the process, since there were some new people involved in it. You know, and to to review, you know, to nuts, the the whole process and timelines. As we think about the future of our schools, we have to utilize every tool available to us. And MSBA funding is one tool, and it's actually a really important tool for us. So critical that we understand the process, critical that we have a partnership with MSBA to ask questions throughout the process. And I think our team, both within Ops and within in facilities, as well as the Green New Deal, and Dell really appreciated that time with Jack and the team. So with that, I will hand it over to our chief to present our proposal.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening, everyone. My name is Delavere Stanislaus, and I'm one month into my new role as the Chief of Capital Planning for the district. I am happy to be here tonight to present to the school committee a proposal for the MSBA Core Project for 2023. I look forward to returning to the school committee later this spring to give a full update on capital projects, the long-term facilities plan, and the school design study led by our city partners at the Public Facilities Department. Tonight, I'm excited to share our proposal to submit statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to build a new facility for the Shaw and Taylor Schools. Next slide. The MSBA is a state agency, offers competitive grants to municipalities, supports school construction, renovation projects. BPS has been fortunate that the MSBA has provided support for two types of projects over the years. The accelerated repair projects to replace our fixed or fixed windows and doors, boilers and roofs, while the Core Program covers extensive repairs, renovations, additions, and new school construction. Currently, BPS has the Josiah Quincy Upper School and the Carter School. MSBA Core Program due to be completed in 2024 and 2025, respectively. Several years ago, BPS committed to building a new pre-K through sixth elementary school in the southern part of Dorchester or Matapan. We know that these neighborhoods do not currently have enough elementary school seats, and they have a high portion of Boston's children. These two neighborhoods alone, the alone, the two, zero-two-one-two-four and zero-two-one-two-six zip codes have twenty-four percent of all Boston's children under five, showing that they will continue to see high demand for elementary school seats in years to come. Southern Dorchester and Matapan have also seen disproportionately less investment compared to other neighborhoods. The last new school built in Matapan was the Mildred Ave, K through eighth, which opened in two thousand and three. Since then, out of forty accelerated repair projects through the MSBA, only four have been in O-two-one-two-four, and only one, a Windows project at the Young Achievers, has been in Matapan. I'm excited to share with you tonight our proposal to apply to the 2023 Core Program for a new facility for a combined Shaw-Taylor School in the southern Dorchester or Matapan area. This is a great opportunity to leverage state funding to support the Green New Deal for Boston Public Schools, expand access to inclusive and multilingual education, and build on the assets of the Shaw and Taylor by designing a new facility specifically for these communities. This is the last year that BPS will be submitting applications to the MSBA without a long-term facilities plan for the district. I'm excited to have that roadmap by the end of 2023 to guide our future capital project proposals. But for now, without the long-term plan, there is no question in our minds that the Dorchester-Matapan neighborhood needs a new school. My team will be aggressive in pursuing all funding opportunities to accelerate the pace of school construction. This proposal, building on our proposal to merge the Shaw and the Taylor Schools for 2024-2025, allows us to concentrate our construction efforts where they will benefit our students most. This is a community that has historically been underserved. I want to be honest, MSBA timelines are long. The new facilities may not impact students who are currently at the Shaw-Taylor Schools, but it's an investment in a community that hasn't seen the kind of investment in decades. In the meantime, we believe that combining two school communities will improve the learning experience for current Shaw and Taylor students by freeing up physical space, add new programming, enough financial resources to invest in new resources and directing our talented educators towards classrooms that are full instead of spreading too few students across many classrooms. I have been in conversations with families, educators, and school leaders at the Shaw and Taylor Schools, including members of the school design team who are charged with shaping the merger proposal. And I'll come back, and I will come back to this body later this spring to discuss the merger in more detail. I'm confident that combining these two school communities will allow us to build on assets.